We're going to call this meeting for the March 1st budget meeting, and we're going to call this to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I think we have a roll call, please.
Christie is absent. Deacon has not arrived. Jabba is excused. Gardner?
Here.
Me? Here. I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thomas?
Here.
And Watson?
Here.
And our new business is the, this year's operating 2026 budget. So we are going to start with the capital projects.
We're going way to the end?
All the way to the end. Mr. Cross has to leave early, so we're going to get him in.
Okay. What did you say?
Capital projects. That's two page 270.
Thank you.
That's where I start.
So I provided a supplemental with some pictures and everything else, just to follow along. I believe Scott provided an updated page because the current one in the budget book wasn't, when it was originally handed out, wasn't correct for the road names, but the dollar amount was correct. So on the supplement and on the corrected page should have the correct road names in there. It's 5.8 miles for 1 million, 1,010,898 to stay within our capital plan of these roads. Most of these roads last time were paved around 2,000. So we're over the 20 years of the expected life expectancy for pavement.
Is there any questions from the council on the road paving? Any questions coming from the budget?
You say most of the roads are 20 years. Is, can we get a list?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Anybody here from the public that wants anything? No. Okay, can we hear a motion to move the budget for the paving forward?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Gardner?
Yes.
Harmelone?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Or yes?
Point of order, can, Mary, can we just do a hand on this instead of calling our names, moving these forward?
You can do actual hands, we're not...
I think that might be easier today.
Want to do all in favor?
We're going to be doing it a lot, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Fair enough.
We need to hear the, the motion as a second.
Yes.
Okay.
Capital items for Public Works on page 270. The first is truck eight replacement. That had a wiring high on our fire, and ever since then, we've been chasing wiring issues, just like today. The truck went down because of a, of an issue. It's a 2008 year model. It's in the capital plan for replacement. We're also going to a wheeler because this, the new truck will go to the Oak Hill Road area. There's an expectation from the developers that there's a possibility of the town accepting more roads come July, which will require more product than what a single axle truck can handle. I do want it to be noted that this actually replacement truck went to bid, and the bid is due March 5th, even though it hasn't been approved. We're doing that based on timeline. It's subject to no penalty if the, does not pass through the budget project, process here. We're just trying to get ahead of scheduling before, to get it by next winter when it comes due, if it does pass. The next item shown is a 1991 chipper. At the last council meeting, the council did authorize. There is an auction coming up where we are trying to purchase a chipper for replacement. This chipper that we're looking at purchasing in the auction has 54 hours. 12 inch chipper. The chipper we're replacing is a 1991. The drum and the anvil is bent, so when it goes to take small brush, it wraps around the drum instead of chipping it, which causes it to plug. It's just not something that can be fixed, that, that without exten, extension money put into it, and for the year, but it's not worth it, and it's at its end of its life. I, then, we went into, I put the truck in here because originally in my capital plan, I had asked for a truck replacement. I just think the Budget Committee should hear that we're trying to work on saving money, so they understand why that a wreck truck is going to be purchased, and we are going to take Rex's current truck to come to Public Works to replace this truck that I was going to ask for. Just in, the wreck trucks will be paid for by using impact fees, so it doesn't affect the budget. It's just another way that we're trying to save money so that they know that we're, we're doing that type of deal out there. The truck that I, I'm looking to replace, like I said, we already replaced the rockers and the quarter panels. Just, it's rusting through again. It's a 2013 with almost 150,000 miles on it. And it's, coincidentally, it's up on the lift just because it needs maintenance work. So that's the story with that. Our, the salt building, where we store straight salt, was built in 1990 roughly. It is, over the years, has 15 of the 21 trusses have been broken from the loader when it goes to pick up. The loader, the, not the new loader, but the old loader used to have what I call a piton in the middle, and when the bucket would go up, it'd angle, and they go to back up, and it would catch the roof truss. We do have prices on replacing it. This was caused from an insurance inspection. The insurance inspection from a municipal said that we have to do a roof replacement on it. Because of the trusses, they have been band-aided together, strapped together in the meantime, but the insurance is requiring a roof replacement on it. We are looking at changing the roof's trusses to a scissor truss, so hopefully this does not happen again in any type of way. So we're trying to think ahead, instead of putting the same type of truss up where this could happen again. That's pretty much all of my capital items. I think, if you don't mind me noting that, I did take the building out of this year's capital. Originally, it was supposed to be in there. I know there was talk about it. We're looking at trying to use the Moody Road and Northeast Road lot as a cost-saving measure. The current lot, which is next to the sand building, would require almost $700,000 in fill, and to get a water main up there for, for, to have drinking water and adequate pressure is almost $2 million. If we could use that other current lot, which the engineers feel is a possibility, that could be almost a $2 to $3 million savings. So I felt it was worth pushing it off because we did have a plan to use that other lot, but there's a substantial savings that could be done if we are able to use that other lot.
Thank you. From the council?
Just got one question. Now, on the roof, our insurance won't cover any part of that roof structure? Because that building's fairly new, I'm guessing, you know, it's a few, what, how old?
1990 is roughly put up.
1990?
Yeah. So it's not the real big one.
Oh, we're talking the small one? Oh, I'm thinking the big salt.
No.
Okay, you got me confused here.
Sand, sand salt is in, and this building holds just straight salt.
All right, gotcha. And I really like thinking outside the box and using this impact fee money that we've just established the town council the last three or four months. It could bring in millions to the town. The taxpayers won't have to pay for upgrades of, of equipment and stuff, and to get a new truck through the impact fee, and then take their truck instead of sending it to auction and reusing it in your department, is huge. And I appreciate you guys thinking outside the box.
Questions from the council? Budget questions? Make a motion to move this forward.
A second.
I'll make that motion.
John, may the motion fail second. I'm in favor of the motion. It's unanimous. Thank you. It's all your capital projects, correct, John?
Correct.
So let's go to your Public Works.
Once we're finished with his, can we come back to capital?
Yes.
Yep.
I know, our chief's not here, correct?
He's, he's coming. He just said he'd be a few minutes late.
So we're into Public Works.
Public Works. Most, most of my increase, just as a general statement, comes from salary increases, CMP, and some lighting projects type of deal. So I'll go through it individually. The salary page, which is done by the Personnel Committee and Scott, determine what the COLA is, and if any of the department, any of the individuals are down lower than the salary survey and corrected. I guess if you have questions, I guess Scott could answer to which ones or everything you could do on that. Do you want to go page by page?
Want to ask questions as we go, or wait? I just, on the 94,000, is that a new employer or just the added, you're up 94, 97,000, I guess?
So in the director's position, I can, I went through and figured it out myself, if you want me to go through and do that.
I just need to know, is it a new position or is it just?
Nope. It's not new position. It's just the overall with COLA and what?
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yep. Cell phones is up $650. In one line, four, it shows 100, but, so we did hire a full-time mechanic, and then let me tell you, that's been awesome so far. He's been there a month. He is servicing all of the town department vehicles now, where that never happened before. So Rex bringing their buses there. He's done code's vehicle. He's done the assessor's vehicle already. It's just working out. But I've included a full-time phone for him because basically he's on call for when the transfer station, like this morning, we had to call him in for that. He's basically on call seven days a week, so I asked for a full-time phone for him. Travel expenses, the next page, stayed the same. Vehicle maintenance stayed the same. The only thing I did is I swapped the numbers for in-house repairs to outside because of the way it's going. So the previous year, it used to show 70,000 for going out, 20,000 for in. The 70,000s to buy parts and everything else is what the difference is there, but the overall number is the same.
John, can I ask just one question? You got repairs hired out 20,000. Could you kind of break down what that might entitle? I know you got your full-time mechanic now.
Could be something that is above us and need to have a line, meaning like what he's capable of doing, type of deal. I mean, it could be having a cylinder honed and sent out type of deal of a motor, that type of stuff. Not something like just in-house repairing it type of deal, meaning work that's got to be completed outside to be able to get the block radiators flushed, anything of that nature.
Good. Thank you.
We're down 39,000 in contractual. A lot of the, were one-time fees for last year. The only thing extra for this year is up 2,000 for catch basin cleaning because we've taken on, we're taking on more catch basins with taking on more developments. The intersection has more catch basins down there. Just need some more money for that type of deal. But overall, like I said, that line's down 39,000. Workshops is the same. Equipment rental is the same. Streetlights, so basically our CMP, our CMP bill, the contract has expired, and our rates have doubled from where we are currently at. So there's $7,000 difference for lighting bills. And in Steep Falls, it got submitted to, I believe, Councilor Pomow about having some new fixtures, as that's one of the walking community up there, and eight locations, and we got an estimate of doing that. So this will be a one-time fee for Steep Falls of eight new location for fixtures, and it's $15,000. Again, for traffic lights, the only thing that changed there is the CMP bill for that, of doubling. For tree removal, 7,500, so it's for tree removal. So we use Colonial Tree Service with his bucket truck. It roughly costs us $2,500 a day to use that with his bucket truck, which is much larger than ours, to be able to do that. So I've scheduled three days to do that. Like I said, it's usually only very large trees. But Matt and I are sharing an employee some. Greg Grovo, he's a, he's an arborist, and he's the new Parks and Rec Director. And so we'd like to get him gear to be able to climb trees and do that, to hopefully help save in that. So that's why that $4,000 is in there for the arborist gear. There's different specialized saws, smaller saws, roping, different clips, all that stuff that you need for that. So that would be a one-time fee in that. Crack sealing is the same on the next page. We're still leaving the plowing contract in there to show that it's a zero because it reflects in the years compared, so that's zero. Fuel is down in price, but up in gallons a little bit for what we're using. So the overall price is up just almost $2,500. Shovel rake shop tools, so, I mean, the goal is that what we're trying to work for in Public Works is, is what we need is a new facility. But we're also trying to, when we get this new facility, not have to go purchase $100,000 worth of tools. So we're trying to do it gradually. So in the shop tools, like we're looking to get a tire machine that we can do tires and stuff like that. If we gradually purchase this stuff over a period of time, it's just not all doing it once. So that's like one of some of the stuff that we're working for and getting and doing, just overall for shop tools. The next page on other commodities, building maintenance. We're going to try to do some painting and stuff, so that went up $1,000. Let's see. That was, and then pavement marking. Obviously, we're having more crosswalks put in down to the intersection, more lines, more stuff that we do ourself, and the cost of paint's just increased. Next page, culverts is, remains the same. There will be a point at some time that we're switching to all plastic culverts and replacing metal, that this will go away, that most of the town will be replaced as we're going through. But anytime that the driveway culvert needs to be replaced, we're not replacing with metal, unless there's a ledge issue or something, it's being replaced with plastic. And the plastic will outlast, obviously, the metal ones that are rusting out. Price of asphalt, went up $2,000 for that. That's for what we use for patch, for going around and patching the roads and stuff during one pothole season, which is coming. Coming right up. Our salt budget, sand salt budget. So last year, there's talk about reducing it. So I'm trying to work with the council and reduce it. So I reduced it from 55 to 4,500 yards, but I want the council to be prepared that next year's budget could be 6,500 yards because it would still allow me to get time of 1,000 yards if I need that because it takes roughly 5,500 yards to fill the building. So we still have the 5,500 yards this year, which I think, when I just went in the building this morning, I'd say we have less than 1,000 yards left from this, from this year, which I call our first part of the winter very mild. But I think we can still make it, if the 4, 4,500 yards will work next year, the falling budget could show 6,500 if I have to get 1,000 in the fall, if you follow what I'm saying by that. So I did try to reduce it for this, for this year's budget, so it's down 1,000 yards. Liquid salt calcium, it's a projected, I'm projecting $78. Our current price is 75.63. It's done through a cog bid. I showed you how the cog bids have gone throughout the year, it's listed there. That's the increase there. Signs went up $1,000. Seems like more signs get stolen all the time, and signs are more expensive. It's just our current sign budget, it's always been going over the last couple of years, so. The next thing that we, at the last page, new equipment. So this is on a, when you hear from Matt and the Parks and Rec Department, again, we're trying to work together in a way with impact fees. A flail mower, a flail mower will be attached to a subcompact tractor, which will be purchased through rec using impact fees, but there's a chance that we're going to use it some to do some roadside mowing to basically be more speedy here. We have a roadside mower with a big arm, but it's very tedious and time-consuming with a flail mower. It's an offset mower. I do have a picture here, if you'd like to see it. Would be, it go, you can go at a much quicker pace, and it's basically just for shouldering to get down the mowing of the roads type of deal. It does take malls, small brush with it, along with grass. But again, we still need both types of mowers for like reaching behind a guard rail. This doesn't do that type of deal. But that would be a one-time fee. We talked, so the new equipment that I know that we talked about, so a nice toolbox for the shop, and then we're talking, we have a service body truck to be able to purchase tools for that, for road, for road repairs.
I know that was a lot, but is there any questions from the council?
On page 142 on the streetlights for Steep Falls, I kind of got the credit for it, and John Gardner should get it also. I got the credit because I chaired the capital improvements that was brought through us, but I think it was Steep Falls Village improvements, Joey Hiller was involved, and they've really pushed for these streetlights that got shot off a number of years ago. And we truly believe, John and I, and I think the rest of the council, that it's a safe walking village. It's probably the only really true walking village we have in standards. And I fully support this with John bringing this forward for this money, a one-time expenditure.
Any other thing, any other questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
On page 155, the flail mower, what's the lifespan of that piece?
I would guess 15 years roughly.
Any questions from the Budget Committee?
Page 139, you had said for contractual, down by 39,000. I showed down by 28,400. Do I have wrong numbers? I showed down by twenty-eight four. Do I have wrong numbers? And then you said catch basin was up by two thousand?
So I have, it's down, maybe from my other book, from thirty-nine, but that's just my handwritten notes. Maybe I was wrong. Maybe it should have been twenty-nine where it was twenty-eight four. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks for the clarification. And then how much was spent last year?
Of that budget?
Yep. Is that the one twenty-one?
Twenty thousand.
And what was requested last year?
I'd have to go back and look.
Some of it goes into reserves though from.
Yeah, that's my next question. What do we have in reserves?
So I, for the engineering, like I know goes into reserves out of that.
I handed out, I handed out a list of reserves.
We still have four months where you have to pull out that account, right, before your new money comes in. So there could be a lot of things coming in in four months.
Thank you. I can take a look at that later.
Just so everybody's aware, the project on Molton's Hill, we are waiting, we're not, last year it got approved for engineering money, but I'm not gonna spend the money until we know what the state is gonna do, because they are looking, they've notified us that they're checking this corridor to see what it's gonna do. So there's no sense of us starting the project until we know what the state's gonna do, because if they're not gonna pay for it, money back in our pocket. So that was scheduled reserve in that account to be used last year, but we have not used that reserve because of, let's let the state look and see if they're gonna pay for it, save our money.
We have a question from the Budget Committee. Seeing none, can we make a motion to move this forward?
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
First by Phil, second by John. All in favor? That's unanimous. And then, just to keep John up here, we're gonna go to the solid waste and then we'll come back to the capital projects. Solid waste.
So solid, solid waste. Salary lines is up minimal this year because we do have a new transfer station manager, so it took down some of the higher salaries and then with the COLA, it just shows the minimal increase of thirty, thirty-eight hundred in there. That's the difference there. CMP for the transfer station, again, that was doubled from the previous year. We are looking, just so everybody's aware, into getting another contract, I believe, right, Scott?
Yeah, the, we were, I had signed a contract a couple of years back for five cents per kilowatt. That contract ended a year and a half ago. Signed a shorter term at ten cents per kilowatt. That will end this November, and I'll be looking, depending on what the rates are at that point, to get the best deal. We use, through main municipal, their program to get lower rates.
The next page, which is the telephone, so clover fees is the biggest increase right there. It averages us right now a thousand fifty per month for everybody to use their debit card, right there. So there is the increase there. Next page on equipment maintenance is the same. Contractual is just the normal contractual increase, which is seven thousand dollars for the waste hauling, twenty-five hundred for waste pickup. This year, there is no household waste day because we done it last year. It's on every other year basis. Special waste disposal is the same. Well testing is up six hundred dollars. It's contractual. The next page of fuels and lubricants is the same. Tools is the same. Transfer station invoices are up and the alarms, alarm monitoring is up. New equipment, there are no new items requested this year at the transfer station.
Questions for John from the council?
I just got one. I said every year, I think the town manager down there is way underpaid for what they do down there and what they take care of for the town. And I know that facility is one of the best-run facilities in this, in Standards, probably in the state of Maine. And I, I see a manager at fifty-six thousand. That has always bothered me. I wish, we can't do it. We should look into paying a manager, because there's a lot of assistant managers and technicians that are getting paid twenty, thirty thousand more than this. And I've always felt that it's such a nice facility and well-kept that we need to make sure the managers stay in place there, as we did the last manager. So I, if I had a choice, I would ask to raise it by five thousand or ten, but I don't know how the rest of anybody feels. Say it every year.
The council? Questions from the Budget Committee?
John, thank you. You have a lot and we appreciate you and your crew and safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me go to get this done.
Thanks, John.
I'll make the motion that we move this section forward.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, John.
Safe travels.
This time, we'll come back to the capital projects, so if you wanna.
Chief.
Chief?
We had the very last year. Yeah, so we have the ambulance in there, our rescue one, to be replaced.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two sixty-seven.
Thank you.
This is through, this is something that'll get approved, hopefully get approved this year, and we're looking at two, little over two years to get it. So this is also in the approval part, or been approved through the impact fees.
Three pages.
Pay four hundred thousand of that. Cardiac monitors for fifty thousand. We bought those in two thousand and fifteen, so we'll try and try and get one this year, one next year, and then one, the third one, three years after that. Hose and nozzle replacement, this is to replace everything we have in town. We're at a point where a lot of it, the shelf life is kind of expiring. We've damaged a lot over the years, so we're getting down there on hose. But on the other hand, one of the problems we have is we have iron, different threads in basically every other town. So we're gonna swap the threads for everything at that time. We've tried for two years in a row to get a grant. It hasn't worked out, so now we're at the point where we need to replace everything and it just makes more sense for us to be compatible, because right now we have to have adapters every time we go to another town or they come here to connect to each other's hose. Public safety ram truck is actually, it's actually a service truck for the mechanic. It's replacing a ninety-five ram, and it's just gonna be like a cabin chassis type thing. And we'll use the same body we have if necessary. But that's pretty much all my stuff.
Chief, can you turn the page actually in two sixty-eight, just make mention of the building and the boiler, if that's okay?
I was just looking at that. Is the boiler price what we, I thought it was supposed to be up more. I thought we had agreed more in the meeting, but anyways. Yeah, so we had the boilers being engineered right now. We didn't realize when we put this forward that it's, the state has to approve it through, and it has to be an engineered plan because it's a public building and the size of it. So that would, that would put the cost up a little bit. But basically, by doing this, it's gonna increase a lot of, we're gonna gain a lot of space in the building because it's a much smaller unit. We're working, we're working with Honeywell right now. They're in the process of engineering it. We have money left over from last year, but this will just help us get that next step to get the hot water and everything on it. Basically, what we have now is a little bit undersized for the building we have. So this, what they're putting in will actually be, have the ability to go bigger if we need it, if we ever expanded or did anything along those lines.
Good. Any questions?
Just to follow up, I think we did move that money forward by quite a bit because we, we're switching to propane, is that correct?
Right.
And just the savings between oil and propane will almost get the money back for the unit. And in the short period, like in eight or ten years, we'll probably be getting our money back because the cost of propane is about a third to half at times of heating oil. And plus, in capital, we also discussed the tanks in the ground, maybe we could reuse them.
Well, that's the other thing. We have a, we had another capital project coming up for the fuel because we don't have enough diesel and gas storage. What, they can actually change the twenty-five hundred gallon heating, heating oil tank that's underground and make that diesel. And then the diesel tank, which is fifteen hundred gallons, they can add that to what we currently have for gas. So instead, basically that was thirty-six thousand dollars for the unleaded portion to be done, and then another, I don't remember, I don't know, twenty-five thousand or something to have the diesel done. So this way here, we're saving, you know, we're kind of, we'll be able to save that bit of money by not having to do those projects, be able to utilize the heating oil tank that's currently there in the ground. I think that's all I have.
How old is the current boiler?
As old as the building. And that's one of the issues is they don't make it anymore. They, some of the external parts they can get, but if we crack another section again, then we're up the creek.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Carol?
What was the number that was discussed in your meeting for the boiler, if it wasn't a hundred thousand?
I think it was like one twenty-five, five or one forty. Forty. I, I know we were just, because we were waiting for some numbers to come in, and we kind of wanted to put a placeholder in here, but I'm pretty sure that we, we just, there again, we don't vote in committees. All we do is discuss, but.
It was complicated too because we're having roof issues and one of the heaters is up on the roof. So we weren't sure, like, what's the cost for roof repair to get that off and the heater? So we are, we've been getting estimates from multiple dealers. So that's why we didn't have anything solid to say exactly X is what it is.
Okay, so the chances this is gonna need to be more than a hundred thousand is pretty...
Well, between the roof and the heating system, yes, it will, it will be more than that. But we're not sure, you know, exactly which line item is gonna be what.
Okay.
Are we gonna try to tie both projects together, the roof and the boiler, or is that not feasible?
Part of it's gonna have to be because they need to, so that's, that's the other part of this. It's not just the boil. There's some rooftop units that actually need to come off, and they're recommending rather than take it off, fix the roof and put the old one back on just to replace it. So there's that whole equation too. So it's not just like a simple boiler. But yeah, so again, we, part of it will be at all at the same time because the, the section of the roof over the fire, the fire bays is like a rubber membrane roof. So they'll have to take those off, repair the roof, fix it all, and then put everything back on. But that'll take care of that side of the roof. Then we have this side over here that's part of the project too, so.
So should we make a motion to increase this to one forty for safety, you know?
Buffer.
Buffer. And if we don't need it, obviously we get spent, but I think I'll make a motion to increase this to one forty because of the unknowns at this point.
I'll second that motion. All in favor of bending this to one forty under the town hall building boiler repair? That's unanimous, so that's now one forty. Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Lisa?
Page two sixty-seven, the hose and nozzle replacement, you said things are kind of expiring. What does that mean?
Well, it's all, I mean, we have, you're talking over three hundred lengths of hose because they're all in fifty-foot lengths. So some of them, the date on them, you know, they, they start failing after ten years or fifteen years, I'm sorry. We have some that are pushing twenty years, but we still have some that are like only seven or eight years old, like, not many. You know what I mean? Because if we, if we blow like two lengths of hose today, we'd order two more lengths on Monday. So we have a lot of mix match years, so nothing's really.
And, and then for the replacement, swapping the threads, is, is that a hard stop? It's a hard fail? It's not, the system's not working right now?
It's not that it's not working, but it's when we lay our hose from a fire hydrant to the house, and then we don't have enough, the next town, the next truck, which would be Gorm or Wyndham, whoever, they would come in and hook into that hose. It's different threads. So now they have to run to our truck or find an adapter to get it. And usually by then, we're out of water and we're waiting for that water. So this way here, everybody's on the same. We did, we went with the national standard apparently back in the seventies and none of the other towns did. So we are the national standard and everybody else's iron pipe. So we actually have adapters. When we buy the fire trucks, they put the adapters on to go to the national standard. So those will all come off, but all of our threads are all different and everything's just old and outdated that we're gonna, we figured we'd just upgrade everything and go to what everybody else has. So nobody else plans on moving to where, where we are, you know, because of the cost, but.
But we're, we're at the national standards and they're not, so we're changing to not be at national standard?
Correct.
Is that a good thing?
There's only like four towns in Maine that have the national standard, so.
What's the substandard? Is it what we're going to?
Yeah, well, it's just, iron pipe is usually, I mean, you could go to the hardware store and buy an iron pipe thread. So if we needed something, we could do that. With the national standard, you gotta order, you know, that's all specialty-made type thing. So this will actually be cheaper for us in the long run because we're not getting this, this different thread when we order hose or order a fitting or anything else in the future.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
And then you have a question too, Joe?
Yeah, on page two sixty-seven, cardiac monitors, fifty thousand. How many does that include?
One. Yeah, these are, these are the, like, the, think of it as an EKG machine that you have at the hospital. That's, they do the twelve lead strips on you in the back of the ambulance. We bought these, we bought two of them in two thousand and fifteen for seventy-four thousand, and they're, right now, they're running between forty-two and forty-nine thousand. So I anticipate by the time we order it, you know, it's going up fifty thousand would be a decent number. But that also, that includes the contract fee, like a service agreement for ten years. Seven, excuse me, seven years. So that will have basically maintenance free in a sense for that period too.
So this would be a monitor and not a thumper?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, this is like, this, this is the, you know, like I said, it does the, the heart rhythm, your blood pressure, you know, it does the whole, a whole lot. It's, you know.
Chief, is it portable? Is it live in an ambulance?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's mounted in the ambulance, but they, you know, they bring it in the house or wherever. They need to go with it. So we have three of them. One, actually, we have four. But the three on the ambulances, they're all up to date, you know, and whatnot. But these ones, they recommend every, again, every ten to twelve years, and we're at the ten-year mark now. So the technology, it's, it's all technology-based. So if they don't support the technology anymore with it, then you gotta obviously go to the next, next model up, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee?
One more. The, the rescue cab, what's the year and mileage on that?
The current one, I wanna say it's a hundred and sixty-four thousand and it's a two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
For the questions from the Budget, any other questions from the council? Can we hear a motion to move this forward?
Move, to move this forward?
Jen Thomas?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you.
Wait. Are we moving forward the entire general administration or was that just?
That was for...
Should have clarified the motion. My apologies.
So if you want to clarify the motion.
Yeah, let's clarify that, just so everybody understands. I'm talking about two, page two sixty-seven.
Correct.
Which we've thoroughly discussed.
And two sixty-eight.
Was that just two sixty-seven?
Two sixty-seven, because I don't think we talked about the other two things.
He just was asked to speak on the other page.
Just that one line wasn't mentioned.
So just page two sixty-seven?
Yeah, because two sixty-eight has more, more things we have to discuss.
All right. Are you okay with the amendment, John?
I'm always okay.
Very good. And let's make a, all in favor of the clarification. Perfect. Great. Now we're all good. Thank you.
Sorry.
So we'll go to assessing.
Are we gonna go through the rest? Are we going to go through the rest of the, the general administration and the?
Yeah, we should go through the full.
I'd go through the full Capitol.
Great, is there anybody else here to talk about the rest of the Capitol stuff?
Scott, do you want to speak to general administration?
Yeah. So the second one is the town hall door security connection project. What that is, is to, right now, all of our door, well, there are a couple of doors that are wired that we can lock down the building if need be, but a lot of our doors are not connected, so you have to go to each individual door and update it. This would allow all the door locks to be wirelessly connected. So if there's a security issue, we can lock down all the doors at a moment's notice. It also allows us to do maintenance on the doors, we can tell when the batteries are going low because we've had multiple doors where the batteries has died and we can't get into offices. We don't know that the batteries are dying until it's too late, so that allows us to do, be able to monitor these doors.
And just to be clear, unfortunately, we've had to lock down in the three years I've been here at least twice, so we do have some unruly residents that require a police presence and a, a safety of staff, so we also just had a recent training from the Sheriff's Office and a specialized police officer for active threats, and they said it was imperative to have for the safety of everyone.
So if it's locked down, is there an automatic call?
Correct. 911, yep.
No one has to do that.
Yes.
With this?
Yep.
Great, any other questions about the door locks? And then do you want to touch base on the parking lot lights?
I can, I can just mention it. The parking lot at night, if, I don't know if anyone's been here, noticed that the lights are giving off purple tint. The public parks director has told us, told in Capitol, that this is the final stage before they actually die. So they need to be replaced, so this is, he got a quote from the company to replace all of the lights, to the LED lights, to back to regular color.
Any questions about the lights? Okay, then can we make a motion to move this general admin- administration page?
I move to move page 268 with our 140,000 dollar amendment for.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of that? Unanimous, thank you. We'll now move to assessing.
Parks and Recreation.
Oh yeah, I wrote on.
And highway road. How do we do what you did though?
Checkmark the wrong page.
Got a couple handouts for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Normally give 10 seconds for handouts.
So I just kind of handed out to you guys, this is kind of just a, a little bit of a hodgepodge of Capitol impact and some small operational stuff, just wanted to give you guys some ideas of what we're looking at. So what we've got going here is the subcontract, subcompact tractor, that's in the impact fee. That's something that is guaranteed, you know, we're looking to get right away, it helps us be self-sufficient. You know, a lot of the stuff we do in the parks, you know, that revolves hauling or moving things, we usually call John. With the addition of that to our fleet, makes it so much easier for us to, you know, move our wood chips, move our infield mix, fix and repair things in the parks, big thing for us is being self-sufficient. Underneath that, we have the F-350, which John had talked about us collaborating with, where we would release our current park truck for him to use, and then we'd be looking to use impact fees to purchase this truck. Minus the plow, the plow piece cannot be part of that, so that would need to be taken out of that. But the dump body, the cab, and the rest of it could be part of the impact, so we'll have to look to amend the plow package out of that. Talked to Brandon earlier, we, you know, the ins and outs of the impact fee of like what, what the dues and all we can put in, what we can't, so we've kind of been going back and forth, back and forth in regards to that, Capitol impact, what else to be operational. There's two trains of thoughts with the shed, you know, Brandon and I, like when we chatted, and then I thought about it is the operational piece would be good for us only because we'd have to wait for the impact fees to accumulate in order for us to purchase the shed. If we left it in operational, then I could get it in Ju- you know, July. We did purchase three or four new kayaks, we have paddle boards and things like that. So I guess there's two trains of thoughts on how we want to move forward with that. I don't know how fast the impact fees are going to accrue, I think they started on the 17th. I don't know how, what we're at right now in regards to that, so there's two trains of thoughts, I'd be totally welcome to take anybody's, you know, advice on which way we think would be best beneficial for us as a, you know, as a, as a town. And last I have on there is the Johnson Field Phase Two, that's a federal grant. It's a matching grant, so basically, we're applying for it, we have an engineer, we're working with an engineering firm, you know, just to add walking paths, ADA paths, pickleball courts, basketball court. Would that match, if we were to receive the grant, we would get 150 back, so the town would be in for 150, and the federal government would be in for the other 150. You know, there has been, I'm talking back and forth with the county and federal, there's a good chance because we've been a recipient of the LWCF grant there before. If you've done that before, then there's a good chance that that federal grant might come back our way. So those are the items that I'm kind of looking for, out of Capitol slash, I guess, impact, I'm not sure how we're going to differentiate that in the future, if that's going to.
Yes, the 300,000 Johnson, that would only come into play with the 150 grant, other than that, it's, it's a mute thing in here, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, it would be a loophole, and if you don't end up getting the federal grant, then the money would, would not be spent. It'd only be spent if we were the recipient of the grant.
I just got one more good question. I just would like to explain impact fees for the people in the public that aren't on a standard and listen on TV. What it is, is the town council, we were charging impact fees only for public safety for any house, new house builds in this town, to Standish. And now we're seeing 400 or 500 houses possibly going in the next few years. We decided that it was going to impact the residents already here, taxes for the new services we're going to have to provide. So when we talk about impact fees, what we're talking about in a nutshell is any new houses built is going to have to have an impact fee for public safety and for rec. Because now we've got to increase our public safety and our rec departments and add stuff, so. So if you're building a house, you could get a $3,000 impact fee. If we build 500 of them, you do the math, so. So what we're doing is protecting taxpayers that have lived here their whole life, and in saying these new developers that are coming in and building these big developments are going to be responsible for paying their share of, of new services versus putting the burden on our taxpayers of today, so. I think that's a nutshell of what an impact fee is in case people aren't quite understanding what we're talking about by buying a tractor with impact fee, and buying a truck because he doesn't have a dump truck, but he's going to have to have more fields and more walks, and he's going to have to provide more services, so now we can, we can get a dump truck out of the impact fee, so that's huge, now he doesn't have to call John, have one of John's guys drive up there and meet him, load a load in a dump truck and take it somewhere, and then wait for the guy to come back, they'll have their own truck and their own employee driving the truck, so it'll save us a boatload of money on doing things like that. But on the flip side, John can use the tractor when he's not using it to mow sides of roads, so that's where we're at. Okay, that's.
I know Jen had a question, then I'll get to you, Lisa.
Can you, what does the Phase Two project include?
Uh, the ADA walking paths, which would make it so that people with disabilities would be able to make it to certain sections of the park, like to the tennis courts, to the playground, you know, there would be, it would either be, you know, material would be up to the, you know, the, you know, the firm and whoever we hire to do that work. We'd be adding a basketball court because Standish currently only has one bas- outdoor basketball court for the public to utilize, and that's out in Steep Falls and Mill Street, so it'd be nice to bring a basketball court to Johnson, you know, that's a little closer for, you know, the people, you know, that, that live in this area, and we're looking to add pickleball courts, which if anybody knows, pickleball is a fast-growing sport, and they are always looking for places to play. So those are the three items that we'd be looking to, and then depending on how much is left over in the grant, you know, we could always try to add, you know, some more amenities while we're out there.
Thank you.
I have a quick, I see a picture of a trailer, but I don't see any mention of a trailer here, is that rolling to something else?
I don't think that.
The trailer was in op- the trailer is in, that's, it's just like a hodgepodge, that's in, the trailer is in operational.
Yeah, it's in operational.
Yeah, only.
Gotcha, making sure, okay.
It's a hodgepodge, a little bit of both. Going back to the storage shed, just for clarification, because like I said, Brandon caught this this morning. And here we have it under, you know, Capitol slash impact for 13, and the operational that's in there for 12. I don't, the hard part with that, with the impact fee is I'm unsure when we'll accumulate that money, so if we don't, that money, if we accumulate it, we can accumulate it by July, it'd be great. So I don't, I'm kind of wrestling whether or not it should remain in operational only because I'll know I'll have that storage facility in July, but it might not accumulate enough impact fees to cover all that, the shed, until, you know, it could be next March before, you know, before we actually, you know, accumulated enough. So there's two different trains of thoughts on that, in regards to that particular piece.
Lisa had a question.
Um, I did, the impact fees, you said that's just new houses, does that include the extra trailer lots going in, or any apartment buildings that make it up?
Apartment buildings would get charged by the door, and it could be 3,000 to 6,000 dollars per door. The mobile home park, every trailer that goes in will be assessed an impact fee, not the trailers owners, but the, the Pine Tree Park.
And then, and then this, this is projected, we're, we're asking for these monies projected on what could possibly happen, it's not in the bank?
It's going to happen.
Well, but so we're.
There's money already in the bank.
Already has the ordinance, so when they come and get a building permit, they have to pay it.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
There's money already in there already, right in the.
That's my question, how much do we have in there right now?
We haven't received any money, it just started.
I thought you had some, a money in from, oh, it's public.
So we have it for roads, yeah.
We have road impact fee money.
So, so if, for some reason, economy kind of craps out and they can't put up all these houses, we're, we're projecting these price, these costs on impact fees that may not happen?
Or do, we're.
So they just wouldn't get any?
There's some in the planning board phase, like we are going to have some go through, we just don't know how many, we have up to 2,000 in the next five years of people coming to build in this town, so we know we're going to get something, what, we have no idea.
So we're spending the money before we have it?
We're not spending the money, we're, that's what he's saying, it's here, yeah, no.
The one with the shed, with the shadows because we don't have that money yet. You know, I need the shed to, for this, because we increased our equipment for, for rentals. You know, do we do it in July, or do we wait to see, you know, it is a waiting game, so do we wait to see? You know, when that money comes in, and if it comes in in December, then, you know, I've got the money for the shed, but I was unable to use it. So that's, that's pretty much the only piece of equipment in here that's kind of, I'm wavering on whether to keep it in operational or, you know, or wait it out to see.
Everything in here wouldn't be bought until we had the impact fee money, and, and some of the stuff's going to have to be ordered.
If, if this goes through, it'll be bonded in, in fall, in Capitol.
Yes.
If we have the impact fee, when we get the impact fees, they'll reimburse the general fund that pays the.
That pays it back through, okay, yeah.
So, so this, this right here, this 458, if the, if the money is not there by the time they need it, it will be bonded? And then if we get?
Some of this isn't impact fee money.
For bond.
300,000 of this is not impact money, any of those 400.
Sorry, so the, the 168,000? They'll get the money, it will be bonded, and then that will pe- that plus the interest will be paid with coming impact fees?
Unless we have the fees that bind it, I guess.
Okay, so, okay. Can we get a list of where those impact fees are and how much is in? Is that something that we can have?
Sure, I mean, there is, for this.
In general.
Zach, didn't we, did we, where did we publish our impact fees?
Awesome.
So you just have it in the ordinance now as.
So she looks at the ordinance, she can see the list of fees. Yeah, no, that's fine, I mean, we don't need to be that deep just to have a, a rough.
As long as it shows what we have on hand for impact, okay.
Now that I think about that, I do remember having that conversation with Scott, so I get, now that he says that, we probably could keep, if we're going to go the bond and then use it as a way, then I think that we should probably keep the shed in impact if we're going to end up.
Keep it in impact.
It won't come out to, will that come out, will I?
Or it can be moved to operational.
But if we bond, if we bond it, then that means it wouldn't, we wouldn't receive it to the fall. So, well, I'm back, I'm back at.
Maybe August.
I guess I'm kind of back towards the other way then, because, you know, by then, that season will have passed for Rich Memorial, and then, you know, we'd have, we'll have storage issues. Not that they're insurmountable, but we will have storage issues if, if we can't get that, you know, before the season opens, have that in place. Before people.
I know it's only $13,000, but if we're not budgeting for it twice, it'd be kind of.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, no, I thoroughly agree, I think, I think, I think I would like to see if I could keep it in operational, just because I would like to see it happen in July because of the amount of stuff we have for rentals, and we're going to put our handicap wheelchairs in there, so, you know, I think it would be beneficial to.
Just to explain, the, the reason it's here is to use the impact fees to pay for it. Or we can move it to operational, and then the special revenue fund would pay for that, you'd be able to pay for that in July one.
Okay.
We had the impact fees on July one, we, we could use those fees.
A lot of different avenues, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Paul.
We don't know what's going to come in, at what time.
70,000 for subcontract, subcompact tractor. This one?
Yep.
This one?
That, the, the one that's in your left hand is the, is the mower. The one that's in your right hand is the tractor, I'll be splitting with John.
Right, so I guess my question is, you're going to purchase both of these?
The mower will be in the 610, in 610 out of operational for the Parks Department. So right now, the one we're talking about's in your right hand, that's the one that John will be, I, we looked for a mower that would work for both of us, so. I had to move my tractor up a little bit more than what I needed to make sure he could get his piece so that we could have a piece of equipment that we could go back and forth with.
We were originally going to buy two tractors, and now we're buying one, we're saving about 40,000 dollars probably because now John's not putting in for a 70,000 dollar tractor. So we actually put two departments using one piece of machinery.
Yes, I do.
Does it matter where the items are that want to be purchased out of impact fees in the budget, does that matter where they are?
I believe so, yeah, it needs to be in Capitol, they're, they're Capitol items.
And then is, also is this tractor coming with any attachments with it?
It'll be coming with the and it'll be coming with purchasing the flare mower. Down the road, we're looking to get a attachment to a tow behind for mowing, which for some of our larger area, areas that'll work out for us, and we'll be looking to add attachments like post hole diggers and backhoes and things like that, you know, to give us more, you know, tools all around in, in the parks, but right now, just the bucket and the flare mower, the attachments, we're looking with the addition of the tow behind.
And what about weights or weighted tires?
The weighted tires, I believe, are actually in the bid. Or the, the.
Just a point of clarification, the freer mowers going into John's account, it's not going through you.
Flare mower is a.
Yeah, so what we, we're, even though we're going to attach it to this tractor, it's not included in the 70,000. I want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Yes, Lisa.
On this tractor, I couldn't find warranty or life expectancy information, how long are we expected to use this, and what kind of warranties?
Um, that's a, that, this is all, you know, kind of a political and everything in regards to just getting pricing out of that. I would say the life expectancy is like most, it's probably about, you know, right around 10 years. If we decide to go with MB. Um, if we decide to go with MB and, you know, and they end up giving us the, the one that's, you know, we'll end up getting that warranty information from them. Um, we haven't really fully committed to one way or another, that's just kind of, one business has kind of given us a layout of what we'd be looking at. Uh, but we're looking for about, you know, same as most of John's Public Works, we have about a ten-year life expectancy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other?
I have a question on the impact fees. Okay, see if I can say this right. So the impact fees are not collected yet, so you're gonna have a bond, correct? For some of these things that they're looking at right now? Okay, so my question is, the bond is paid by taxpayer taxes?
Uh, yeah, the debt service, yes, over, over a period of time.
Yes, okay. All right, so up today, I'm okay. So then the impact fees, when you start getting it, then that's, that's paying back the debt.
Correct.
Right? So do the taxpayers eventually get reimbursed for the money that they've paid for it?
In a sense, yes, um, it reduces the net, the future year's budgets, because we won't have to budget for that debt service payment.
So I'm not really, really in favor of debt service. I think people should be living on a budget, like we do, and I really don't like that. But, and I can understand the impact fees, and I think that's a good thing. So right now, you're using it for the highway?
Yep.
And that comes out of the housing too, correct? Correct, when a person puts in a house?
Yes.
And then the?
Permit.
Impaction, right?
And public safety.
And public safety?
Yep.
And is there something involved in there for schools?
No, we cannot do that.
Can't do that?
No, it's a law. We've already explored. We had, we had to hire a consulting firm and there's, there's methodology that you have, we just can't say like, we want to do this. Like, we have data that shows how we arrive there. And we already checked with a consultant, we checked with the school department. The school department is not experiencing enough growth, and because we're a district, we cannot charge for a school impact fee.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Sure.
Follow, follow up to that, sorry, I'm, I was gonna ask about the impact fees regardless, so this is good. Um, the money that we're saying for now it goes to capital bonds and it will be, will be paid back by impact fee. Are we, um, including in the estimates percentage interest?
No.
And how much is the interest right now?
Uh, between three and four percent. It, it fluctuates depending on the market.
Thank you.
Any other questions or need of clarification?
For the, um, Ford F-350 pickup, do we need to take out the plow piece of it? Because that cannot be used for an impact fee.
We did, I talked with, with Zach, and Zach said, um, in regards to impact, we'd have to remove the plow.
Does that change the price?
Seventy-five thousand, then, with the plow or is it without the plow?
I mean, the seventy-five is with it. I've got a meeting with a fleet, a guy that does fleet work, I'm gonna work over with him the entirety of it. I believe the seventy-five is with the plow package, um, so if it does, it'll drop it, you know.
Plow package and come on truck, but the plow will be separate, so.
Yeah.
Can I just ask you a question? I mean, all these items that we're talking about, capital, stuff that we've had planned for a while, now the impact fees have came, now it's a bonus.
Yeah, you gotta go to the mic.
Bonus that we can pay for some of these things, so like this, if we're gonna bond it anyways, why, what difference does it make if we, you know what I mean? Just only re- only reimburse what you can with the, with the plow truck?
Right.
It's, the price is the same, so instead of changing everything, I mean, you, because you're gonna need a plow anyways. So if we're gonna bond it and then use the impact fees to pay what we can with it, because the impact fees just came along as something that's cool that. Bonus. A bonus that we can pay this stuff off with, we had all this stuff planned for, well, ten-year capital plan, so, um, everything that's in here that we're talking about is all stuff that's been planned. It's just like my, the ambulance.
Right.
It's two, two and a half years, so hopefully the money that we can put towards the ambulance, we might not have to bond that, so that's a bonus and we'll have enough when that comes in to pay for that.
But I just wanna make everybody, we never charge impact fees for rec, for public safety, just for roads. Now, we're gonna be charging, and probably upwards between four and six thousand dollars per house. We have four hundred houses coming up in the next three, two or three months. Every time a developer comes in and wants ten lots because he's approved, he gets charged six thousand dollars. So we could conceivably see over two million dollars come in in the next eight or nine months. There's no way that every developer in, in the, in Standish is not gonna build houses for six months. So I really think we're getting way out there on this, what if the impact fee doesn't come, it's gonna come in, it has to come in. The town council set these fees a few months ago, Gorham, Wyndham, all the other towns are charging anywhere from eight to ten thousand per house. So they, it's still a bargain to come to Standish and build a house. So I think we're getting, spending a lot of time, but I, I promise you that these fees, we've set it up, they will come in. Or no one's gonna build a house in Standish, and that's not gonna happen with all the development that's going on. And we're talking not just twenty thousand, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in through one developer at a time. So, uh, that's what I had to say.
Can you add a question?
I just think I wanted to clarify is, when we're talking about impact fee money, we have to be very specific that whatever we're budgeting for is aligned with our, our capital plan and that. I don't, my, my whole point about the plow is, I don't think that the rec department can have a plow.
Correct.
Not true, because the rec department has to plow the skate rinds and they have to plow the parks. You know, they, 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 John does it now, but he really shouldn't be doing it because it is a recreation.
It's actually a recreation.
And that was a whole idea with the plow, because he would be able to plow the parking lots for the skating rinds and he'd plow the ice rinds, do whatever he has to do, plow out here to his areas, plow with John to feel, for people getting in the dog park, whatever. So basically, we would take a percentage of John's, which he's, the guys work extremely hard to do what they do, but yet they've got to pick up the rec department's, uh, fields and stuff. So that's why we, uh, felt the plow would work well for us, you know, and we thought it was an impact fee.
We have Greg Grover, who's our Parks Foreman, that he, he does a, um, a fair share with the Parks truck we currently have that we'll be giving to John. Um, Public Works is definitely part of that going forward, I mean, they, they come in to aid us, they, and, but Greg does a good job of, with our Parks truck, trying to maintain most of it, Public Works coming, so it's collaborative. But yes, the plow, we do use our Parks truck with a plow on it to plow out all of the, you know, the dog park and some people have access to all this stuff. So, um, Joe, it is a collaborative effort, you know, between the Parks and John to get us all up and going by the time the storms are over.
I, I don't have an issue with it, I just wanna make sure that it's consistent with our impact fee ordinance, that's all.
And I, I do believe the plow would be impact fee based because of the use we're gonna get to clear the fields and clear the parking lots so kids can skate and do things like.
Zach, we were fine.
And we have a plow now on the truck.
No, so.
I mean, if, if you're gonna buy a plow anyway, it's.
You have to come up to the mic, anybody that speaks has to come to the mic, because people at home can't hear us if we don't come to the mic.
I mean, if you were going to, um, do you need the plow anyway, even if there's no new development coming to town?
Well, we're losing our truck, so, I mean, like, like John would be taking that truck and maneuvering to himself. So we would be plow-less at that point, um, because, you know, with the truck that we would be getting with impact would be our plow truck also.
The answer is, you need it anyway, despite no new.
Yeah, if we do the trade with John.
Oh, you can't have it in there.
Okay, I guess I.
Thank you, Zach.
You know the truck, just no plow.
Ezekiel?
Um, I'm just gonna throw this in, this isn't a question, this is just kind of a public service announcement. For those people listening and here who are concerned about where Standish is going forward, our next comprehensive plan, public forum, will be ten o'clock to one P M. on Saturday, March twenty-second. It'll be here, there'll be more information on the website. We need to hear from as many people as possible who, you know, what, what people in Standish want to see going forward. And that will, that kind of melds in with a lot of the questions about impact fees, schools, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So should we make a motion to take the plow off, since it's not allowed? Scott, yes?
I'll make a motion to take the plow off the truck at this time, because we've been in this way too long.
If we take the plow off, if we reduce it to seventy-five thousand, then we won't be able to buy the plow.
But Zach's saying, so we just have to be clear, it can cut.
We can put a plow.
I can't use the impact fees.
Yes, correct, correct. I just wanted to make it clear.
We'll just put the plow in your general thing today, we'll add it in somewhere, that's what has to be. We know we need a plow, so we'll just add it in to his budget when you come forward.
On the capital piece, I don't know how we feel about, we want to, I mean, the shed staying in capital or moving to operational. I guess, do we want to address that now or when we come up onto the operational piece for Rich Memorial?
I think since we're about to vote to move this forward, we need to address it, the shed issue now.
Scott, what's your opinion of where it goes?
We need to operational and then you can buy it July one.
Yeah.
Yeah, done.
So we're, we're scratching the thirteen thousand for the shed off of this capital plan.
And the plow.
And we're scratching, we still need the truck.
Still need the truck and the dump body.
So what's the cost of the plow?
I would take fifteen thousand off, I think we'd be safe.
So reduce seventy-five to sixty?
Sixty for the truck and fifteen for the plow frame setup, I think you're gonna be pretty much right on the money there.
So Phil, can you remember to remind us to add the fifteen to?
Yes.
The operation.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I move that we, um, change the Ford F-one fif- three-fifty line from, for Ford F-three-fifty pickup dump body and change the price to sixty thousand, and that we strike the storage shed with its associated cost.
I'd like to, I'd like to strike out Ford because we have to go out for a bid on this. We can't just say it's gonna be a Ford today, because Chevrolet, everybody can bid on this truck. So I'd just like to say plow truck and not eliminate the Ford. He showed us pictures of Ford, but we have to go out for bid, it might come in, you know, so we need to get rid of the Ford.
All right, can we try it again?
Yes.
Well, can I ask a question before you make the motion?
Go ahead, John.
Um, do you think sixty thousand is gonna be sufficient for the truck and dump body? Uh, fifteen thousand for our plow just seems quite a bit, so I don't, I don't want to undercut, is it ten thousand?
I mean, I'm, I wanna say that fifteen, I mean, I, that might cut us a little short because of the, what we, you know, I think I would know more after I talk with the fleet, you know, get more information from the fleet guy. I mean, uh, but if we're gonna shift the plow to operational, is it gonna, is that what the plan was? Was to take that, take that plow and move it to operational, as long as that's gonna pass an operational, then, I mean, I think, you know, that would.
I think we gotta figure it out, let's just get order going here. I think we figured it out.
But if we go to sixty or sixty-five, like, what is gonna give you enough to buy the truck with the dump body?
I would say, I would be more comfortable with sixty-five, but I could probably.
Go with sixty-five, I don't, sixty-five and ten.
Ready for me to try again?
Yes. Do it again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so let's say heavy-duty pickup truck with a dump body.
Yes.
For sixty-five thousand dollars. And we would be striking the pre-made storage shed for Rich Memorial Bee- Beach for thirteen thousand. And the rest would stay the same.
There's a motion made, is there a second? I'll second that. All in favor of the amended budget lines, all in favor, very good. I'll sit. Ten minutes. We're taking a break in fifteen minutes just so everybody is aware.
Next one will be.
So we'll move to assessing at this time. No, we're taking a break in fifteen minutes, just, I heard some rumors of wanting to take a break, so.
Yeah, I'm ready to go again.
We're gonna be moving to assessing. Is there, a department head for assessing here?
Um, Joe was, Joe was not here, and his budget basically remained the same. I think it actually went down, yeah.
So is there any questions from the council on the assessing budget?
Uh, just had a one. How much of this assessing budget is, uh, of the people that work, I think you got a assessor, assistant assessor, appraiser, assistant, assessing assistant, so how much of this actually goes towards that, the revale that they're conducting? Uh, some of these salaries tied into the revale?
One, the, the appraiser.
And so that would go away down the road sometime?
Uh, we plan on keeping it a permanent position, it's a ju- it's a law that every four years, so we have it. And it just, um, I actually emailed a, a document that explained it better, and I didn't print it, but I can find it and share it again. It's by law, and so by having a, a full-time employee, it's a constant circling of, of the appraising.
Does that mean that there wouldn't have to be a reassessment every?
Yes, exactly.
So just be a rolling reassessment?
Exactly.
Any questions from the Budget Committee? Okay, then can we make a motion to move this assessing budget forward?
Motion to move it forward.
Second.
All in favor of moving it forward? unanimous, thank you. Now, now we'll go to Code Enforcement.
Um, before J P starts, uh, as part of like, I should have mentioned assessing on the bottom part of it, it said, um, a new piece assessing assistant. So, uh, before I started, there was another staff person and that, that was cut. Um, so this would, uh, this person would be out front, um, where Ruth and, um, Jackie sit. We're so busy and with the anticipated, um, whatever, five hundred to thousand, um, new, uh, building permits, we expect, expect that to be very busy, so this person will help J P and whoever else out front.
Okay, J P, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this year, I asked for another full-time Code Enforcement. And then with the Personnel Committee and the Town Manager, uh, we discussed the, uh, dwellings that are already currently on the books of the Planning Board, uh, which is two hundred and seventy-seven new units that have already been approved. Woodbury Heights, uh, the Roseland Project, and the next one right now is the Bonny Eagle Road, the Five Brothers, um, proposal. I think it was a hundred and fifty-five dwelling units. Uh, based on that, um, each dwelling unit, new dwelling unit, I did seven inspections minimum. Um, so adding the two seventy-seven, adding the seven inspections at the time, that adds up to, I have it written down here, almost over nineteen hundred inspections, just added on to what is currently on the books now. Uh, that does not include somebody buying a parcel, building up their own house. These are just, the numbers are based off, uh, for the new employee here is just based off what is approved on the books. Yes, it's not gonna happen this year, all of it, majority of it's gonna happen sooner than later. Um, and that's why I asked to put that in. The salary we put in, top end is sixty-three thousand. I put in for hourly rates of twenty-eight to thirty-two, depending on experience and certifications. So if you get somebody that has all their certifications that require to have, to be a Code Enforcement Officer, they'll get a higher salary than somebody coming in that just has a basic, uh, one certification. And we, we do train them, uh, go out to classes and such, um, to get all the certifications. So that's the big line item that went up, um, the only, a couple other things. The, uh, I did, and my travel, I'm not sure everybody got, it didn't get into this one, but we did have seven hundred dollars added on for, uh, use of a personal vehicle. We do get someone, um, and the vehicles are being used and they have to go out, it's a seventy cents, the IRS, whatever the rate is per mile. I did add in several hundred dollars for that, and it was not on this. Coffee you got? Under dues and subscriptions, there's no increase. Under contractual, uh, increase just the cell phone use for the new employee. I did increase the training by five hundred and forty for the new employee. That's the maintain term certifications, um, like this is coming Thursday, I'm going to Portland for, uh, builders and the Code Enforcement officials training. They do those quarterly, uh, so add another person on to that. We do an annual training up at Sugarloaf, um, also a two-day program. New vehicle, uh, fuels and inspections. I just got a brand, well, I got a new vehicle to code. It was, it's got a hundred and forty-two thousand miles on it, over a hundred and ten thousand hours on motor, it's an Old County Sheriff Cruiser. Uh, so I really can't tell you what the, we had to spend a few more money this year on it because the, I had to have a motor mount put in, a couple other things, but I'm pretty confident that the fifteen hundred dollars. a couple other things, but I'm pretty confident that the fifteen hundred dollars that's in there will maintain the current vehicle that we have.
Great. Any questions for the Code Enforcement?
I guess, what did you say about, you had to add seven hundred in somewhere, did you say it wasn't in here, where did you?
It was when I presented it, and it wasn't when I found it, it's just seven hundred dollars into the, uh, travel expenditures. That's, uh, the IRS allows seventy cents per mile. Uh, and that's if you have to use your own vehicle to go out and do inspections and such, if, if I'm out doing an inspection and there's another one scheduled at the same time, one of us will have to use our own vehicle. Um, and it's seventy cents, seventy cents per mile, if that, um.
So we need to add that in, the seven hundred, I'm thinking, down the road. And I'm confused, back fifteen years ago, we bought the CEO a brand-new vehicle, and yet you're, and he was part-time, I think, and you're full-time and you get the hand-me-down police cruisers. Why, why aren't you putting in for a new vehicle, I guess? Because wear and tear and maintenance sometimes eats up way more than if we bought a new vehicle that would be out there ten years and with the warranties and stuff, so. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yep, uh, honestly, personally, right now with the increase, like, I had, I ran the numbers Thursday before I left. We're up to six hundred permits this year alone, last year we did six ninety-nine in the fiscal year. We averaged forty-five permits, uh, excuse me, fifty-eight permits last year and the year before, we're up to eighty-six permits a month this year. So I think it's important to get another person on board. Uh, we do have some vehicles, if the, if the assessing isn't using the old Code Enforcement vehicle, then I'm sure we can use it. This was just a safety net in there for this year, um, if we have to use our own vehicle. I would love to have a new personnel in the vehicle at the same time, but I don't think you're gonna allow that.
I would allow an amended, because just like you said, six hundred, nineteen hundred times you're gonna be out there inspecting, you're probably putting more time in, in a vehicle than probably anybody in town is pretty much, except for the plow guys maybe. But, um, I'm surprised we don't step up and put a nice vehicle.
Yeah, county did give us two for free, so that's what we're using, and we do have the old car, so right now we have plenty, they're just not new, and with our mechanic, he's been able to super mop.
Okay.
You wouldn't need the seventy cents, right, if we have plenty?
So I'd just like to make, make a motion to add the seven hundred dollars in under, is it contractual?
Is that gonna be on page twenty, Phil?
Um.
Yes.
Yes.
There was a motion to add seven hundred dollars for mileage on page twenty.
Travel and expenses.
On the travel and expenditures.
Oh, two, seven hundred, or add in the seven hundred, so it's gonna be?
Seven hundred.
Adding seven hundred.
So it's gonna be a total of eight seventy?
Correct. Is there a second for that motion?
I second that.
Move a seconded, all in favor of adding seven hundred? Unanimous? Thank you. Um, any other questions, John?
Um, yeah, so for those that would say, um, that we're growing too fast, could, and so maybe we don't need an assistant, can we just not give out and build so much? Um, can you just address that, basically, we really can't, I guess, deny permits and things like that, and we have to grow?
There, so, there is a growth ordinance in town, um, which means you're required to get a growth permit for any new dwelling. However, the two hundred and seventy-seven units that have been approved by the Planning Board, already on the books, is in a, they call it the growth area, where they want growth in the town, where no growth permit is required. Uh, outside of that area, like the rural area and stuff like that, there's a hundred permits per year for new dwellings that are allowed. These two hundred and seventy-seven units don't go towards that at all, the trailer park, some of them will, some of them are village, uh, elderly housing, I don't want to use elderly, but.
Senior.
Senior housing, uh, that will not go towards the growth permit as well. So those, we are growing, there are limited, you can limit the growth outside of the growth area, I guess, to me it's backwards. Uh, the growth area doesn't require a growth permit, but the other areas do, so. Uh, like I said, the two hundred and seventy-seven units that have been in front of the Planning Board are all in the growth area of the town, which don't require growth permits. So I can't restrict those.
Right, so you're gonna be a very busy person, so you're definitely gonna need another person to go and help you out, manage this.
It'll help everything to violations and emails, the phone, to give more time to get everything done that we need to do, yeah.
Roger.
Thank you.
Would that also enable vacation coverage, so that?
Yes.
So there will always be a Code Enforcement person?
Yep, right now Jackie's the backup, um, she's getting done in the next year or so, so we'd have to have somebody, um, be the backup for the town. Um, we do talk a little bit with other towns about covering major, uh, vacations or, you know, injuries or something like that. Um, however, right now, we don't have anybody, I don't have anybody to cover me. I've covered a couple of the towns throughout last year for a week or two, didn't have to do anything, but, um, it would help having somebody here every day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Carol?
I just need clarification, so for the personal truck when town truck isn't used by other departments, do you need seven hundred or eight seventy?
Uh, I had eight seventy in my original budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Okay. And can we make a motion to move the Code Enforcement forward?
Make that motion.
I'm second.
Favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thanks JP.
At this point, we're gonna take, uh, ten minutes for a break. Back here for ten-four.
Everybody can find their seats, we're gonna get underway again in General Administration.
Charging for General Mission at the meeting now.
Oh wait, they already were done.
Sure thing, so we'll go to the Town Clerk then.
This is the one I've been waiting for.
Again, just Town Clerk.
The other one I've been waiting for.
Actually, let's do Zach next, so he doesn't have to...
Can everybody hear me and see me?
Yes.
The first page is page sixty-three. This is salaries. These numbers are generated from years, last year's amounts with the COLA increase included. Questions on that page? Page sixty-four is travel expenditures. This is the mileage that staff gets for going to training. Also includes any mileage that's paid for staff posting election notices and things like that. Questions on that page? The next page is dues and subscriptions. This is staff's membership dues to various organizations that the Clerk's office belongs to. And we do attend monthly Clerk Association meetings, actually they meet up to four times a year. Being part of the main Town and City Clerks Association does get us a discounted rate for paying for classes through MMA. The next page is contractual, that's page sixty-six. This is probably the largest count in the Clerk's office. This is election-related expenses, ballots, programming the machines, additional rentals, memory sticks. It also includes any updates to the code book, those fees come out of the Town Clerk's budget. And then miscellaneous items such as records preservation, binding, council amendments, and such like that. Can I answer any questions on that page? The next page is training, that is page sixty-seven. This is to send five staff members to three classes. The MMA classes tend to be about sixty dollars for members. And we also do hop onto any free training that we can take. Questions on that page? Advertising, notices, this is typically where we take the advertising for the dog renewals. All of the advertising I do for elections or ordinance changes, that does come out of General Admin. Questions on that? And then office supplies, that's on page sixty-nine. Just general things that are specific to the Clerk's office. From, we buy postcards, we send postcards out for voter registration needs and dog licensing renewals, among other things. Questions on that? And then the last page is other commodities. This includes the funding for election meals, Election Day meals, other things we need for Election Day. And that's about it. Any questions on that?
Questions for Mary? Questions from the Budget Committee for Mary?
Make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
Second in, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Zach, let's do planning. Which is page, starts on seventy-nine.
Good morning, everyone, planning on page seventy-nine. So the only real, obviously salaries are self-explanatory, they include the COLA. The only really line item that went up in my budget was dues and subscription. And that was for, if we go to page eighty-three, there's a, there's four thousand dollars in there for iWork software, which basically would allow, is kind of like a digital project management software, that would allow applicants to apply online for the Planning Board. As you can imagine, we deal with a lot of paperwork, and I feel like this would be helpful for staff, just in terms of managing projects, but also collaboration with other departments, because we work closely, obviously, with Code and Public Works and Fire on all these projects that get presented to the town before they go to the Planning Board. I can, I did talk to them this week, and I can reduce that to thirty-five hundred, so that, you know, not much, but it's something, so that can go down. If you want to make a motion to move that down to thirty-five hundred, that will suffice for that. And again, because Code and Public Works already uses the software, I feel like it'll be a nice centralized thing for everyone to have access to. And it'll, like I said, it'll really help, I think, with collaboration and save time and paper. So that's why that's in there. But other than that, everything else, you know, my mileage and everything for, has stayed the same, I believe. The gravel pit inspections on page eighty-four, I just want to note that those do not hit the tax roll, that ten thousand dollars does not hit the tax rolls. You'll also see a ten thousand dollar line item in revenue for those, because we do charge, we make the pits pay for those inspections, not the taxpayers. So that's a wash, that does not hit the tax roll. Training and board meetings, that's about, that's about it really, let me know, any questions?
Any questions? Is there a desire for the Council to make that four thousand to thirty-five?
I move that on page eighty-three, we changed the iWork Planning Module expense from four thousand to thirty-five hundred.
I'll second that motion, all in favor of the adjustment? Okay? Any other questions from the Budget Committee or the Council? Yes, Lisa?
The iWork software, is there any way that, like, the whole, the town can purchase seats or licenses and split the cost? Or is that by department only? Would it be cheaper if the whole town used it?
That already is kind of factored into this price, because we do have...
They do have it, JP has it in his budget as well, they're sharing.
Oh, so we did purchase by seats and then they just...
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of have piecemealed it together, just at different times. But now that Code and Public Works has it, we feel like it would be a nice central hub to look at all the plans and stuff that we get, because these plan sets are huge, and I just want to cut down on the paper.
Okay, so then, this is, this is a portion of what they already pay?
Pretty much, yeah, and this will go down to three thousand in the future, just because there's a five hundred dollar, you know, kind of initial cost. So it'll go down to three thousand in the future as well.
Any other questions? And let's make a motion to move the planning budget forward as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Yep.
Zach, will you turn John Cross's thing upside down, so...
This time we're gonna go to public safety.
I don't see the sheriff this year.
Which is page one oh seven.
I'd just like to make people aware that Robbie is my son, and if you feel I shouldn't vote on any of his stuff here, I guess you should tell me, I guess. But I think I can be fair, but I just want to make people aware that Robbie is my son.
I have no objection to waiving that conflict for the purposes of today.
I agree. Thank you for making it known.
Thank you. First off, the first page is our salaries, which it is up a bit with the COLA. There's also, at the bottom, you see the full-time basic firefighter EMT. We currently have four positions there now. We're looking to add four more to that line, but not, for only half the year, starting in January. So that's showing like a hundred and six thousand dollar increase there. And just to throw it out there, all the other positions up above, from the paramedic, the advanced firefighter, and the firefighter EMT, those are all for four positions apiece right now, that's why the, it's not for one, I guess. Another thing that we did receive from the state, it was a sustainability grant, retention and sustainability grant for payroll. So we use that to give these people, just the full-time people, a raise, a two dollar raise, I think it was, whatever the state, we figured it out to be. I found out the other day, we're gonna be getting that same thing again this year, but more money. We just don't know the amount, we won't know for ten more days. But, so that'll kind of help offset some of this larger increase here. And of course, that goes, that carries over, that line carries over into the next page too, with all the other stuff. Some of the things we had to recalculate was the holiday rates per their union contract. So those were up a little bit. We did reduce our fire call hours, which is for essentially volunteer people that come from home. We reduced that line item by five hundred hours. So that brought that down a little bit, just to try and close the gap. So, yeah, that lines up a bit, but it's, like I said, it's adding four positions too for the following year. And that would give us two full-time people on each ambulance twenty-four seven. Next line item is cell phones, that actually decreased. They were all, all the cell phones in town were under my budget. We kind of had an audit done on those last year, so it reduced it by like fifteen hundred dollars. That's why you're kind of seeing some of the other department heads with cellphone requests in their budgets. Travel fees, travel expenditures, there's no change there. Dues and subscriptions, there's no change there. That stayed the same. Professional fees, by law, we're required to have a medical director who oversees all of our EMS people. They went up, they increased there by twenty-five hundred dollars this year, so that's up to seventy-five hundred. This is kind of a brand-new thing, last year, everybody kind of came in cheap to try and become a medical director for people. So pretty much everybody went up, you know, almost fifty percent across the board, so that's an increase there. The next page under intercepts, this line actually also pays for the people that have the medical subscriptions. So if somebody has a subscription and we're tied up at another call in GORM, or somebody comes and picks a patient up, we still have to pay that bill to GORM. So that's where, that comes out of that, that's three thousand, but I did go up from five to seven. Intercepts, that three hundred dollars apiece, so that's why that's up six hundred dollars. The next one, equipment maintenance, it's up a bit. I actually went up on the general maintenance. We're getting pretty close right now, I think we're seven months through the year, and we're ninety-something percent spent in this line, just because, you know, a lot of the repairs and so forth. So the general maintenance did go up eleven-five. Gas meter stuff, that went up a little bit, the repairs and calibration. Our ladder testing, which has to be done by a third party, that's up twelve hundred dollars. Same with the hose testing, that went up to a thousand, or up a thousand. Engine four pump rebuild, you'll notice was in there last year, that's in there again this year. We were able to replace some valves to get us by another year without it. And the biggest reason we haven't done it is because we went over on the general repairs. So that's why that's left in there. Station maintenance, that was mostly for painting, that's the type of stuff around the building. We haven't really done a whole lot out there, so, you know, repairs and whatnot, just little things. So that's why that one is up twenty-one thousand, five hundred. Contractual is up again too, the hydrant snow removal, that's a formula-based. And it was based off, what was it, a hundred and thirty-three fire hydrants? I think for two storms or three storms, whatever it was, so that increased a bit, because we actually have a hundred and eight, with all the new development, we have a hundred and eighty-five hydrants in town. And it's basically a five dollars a storm, a five dollars a hydrant to remove the snow, and we did that times six storms. ARL contract is up a little bit, this year Animal Refuge League is up just a little bit, but that's contractual and it's based off per capita, so. The medical reimbursement, that is actually up a bit. But a lot of that, that's revenue-based, they get seven percent of whatever we bring in for revenue, and we've actually brought in a lot more revenue, so that's why that's up. The records management software, that's zero again. The old kill tower rental, that goes up each year contractually. The communicate dispatch, CCR, CC County Dispatch, again, another contractual thing, it goes up like three percent each year. We did reduce the K-9, ACLK-9 supplies, because we feel confident we didn't really need that this year coming up, so that went away. Next item is training. Our EMT classes, we've actually, we had an abundance of people, citizens come in, more call company-type people, volunteers that want to, want to join us. And this year, I think we ended up sending eight through EMT class. And they went up from, I think it was twelve hundred, to fifteen hundred, so that's, that's up a bit. And then the PALS and ACLS, those are just recertifications that our paramedics have to have annually. So they, those went up, those doubled, because it was only for one, they were three hundred dollars apiece for each class, each person, so we added a little bit more in there for that. Next is the hydrant fees. Again, that's based off the water district, they had a five point two percent increase, so that's what, that reflects the sixty-three ninety-five increase on that. And again, that's for, I don't know, a million six feet of water main and a hundred and eighty-five fire hydrants. Our turnout gear. We've kind of, this has always been something that's been in the budget since, I don't know, mid-nineties, but it was always, we'd get five sets. A few years ago, we increased it to eight. And now we're at the point where, this year, I think we need to bump it up a little bit, because we're kind of down on gear, and we have a lot that's expiring. The last bit of a grant we had, because this stuff has a shelf life too, previous grant we had, we bought it all at once, so we've been trying to offset the grant. So that's up a little bit, quite a bit actually, from eight sets to fifteen. The other part of that that went up was the uniform allowance at twelve employees. Contractually, they went up a hundred dollars, so they get three hundred dollars a year for uniform allowance. So that's that one. Fuel and lubricants, again, that's just based off what we previously used in the bids we do. Station supplies, I just went up a hundred dollars on that, just because batteries have gone up, like, different things. So that wasn't too-too terrible. Medical supplies is up a bit, obviously, we're busier and busier, and the price, the cost of everything is more and more. So it did go up on the bandaging, cardiac supplies, and airway, so forth stuff. So I did go up with on the bandaging, cardiac supplies and airway, so forth stuff. The oxygen supply, that went up drastically, I'm not sure why. But that's, I think we're averaging around fifty-six to fifty-eight hundred a year, so we went up to six thousand this year. The one thing we did add in is the video laryngoscopes. Those are basically to put in advanced airway down, it's a camera, so you can see where you're going inside the person, so that'd be for three of them, one for each ambulance. This one here, so going back to capital. If if where that's moved forward now, we can actually reduce this by twenty thousand dollars. Because there's still eleven thousand five hundred in there for some hose, and then eighty-five hundred dollars in there for nozzles, and with the capital, as long as that passes, we should be, we can reduce that number by the twenty thousand, because we'd be replacing it all at once. So if you guys want to take that out or make a motion or whatever for that. We did add in, there's a few things that are added in, excuse me, one of the big ones is the Knox box key locks. Currently, right now, we have pretty much every school and business, the water district, college, they all have what they call a Knox box on the building. We have keys assigned to specific trucks. And that opens up a master lock box at each business facility. Right now, we don't have a good program to secure those keys. They're in essentially a realtor lock box on the fire truck with just a four-digit code, we punch in and anybody can grab them and have access to whatever. This way, this system here, we we need nineteen of them, we're gonna try this new, this system through our dispatch center for five trucks. But the key is actually locked in a lock, and they they, so if we need the key, they'll actually type in a code and it'll release, electronically release the key for us to get into the the business or wherever we need to be. So that's that's kind of a, that was a capital item, we took it out, so we figured we'd try it on five before we bought all nineteen of them, so. It just gives us more protection, I guess, from anything happening, or the key being misplaced or something along those lines. Other than that, that's. Any questions?
How many calls are you up to a year now on your fire EMTs roughly?
Last year, we end, we're, the calendar year, we ended up around, just under twenty-four hundred, I think it was.
Does that include the fire calls too, or just?
Fire, all all emergency calls. Then another two or three hundred with the animal control and everything else, so.
The four more positions for half-year, is that just because of where the hiring process is, or is that going forward, you only needed people for half a year?
No, so, well, one of the big things was, when we did this before, the last four we got a couple of years ago, we did two and then two. So it kind of was, instead of just doing two, because it really kind of messes us, because they were, it's the twenty-four hour schedules, so the two would only be, would would always have shifts open. So this way here, for half the year, would you just get higher all four, but we did it for half the year, just so it wasn't such a big burden the first time, you know, like a big, huge increase the first time, I mean, it's it's huge, but it it'd be double that if we did the whole year, so that's why we kind of soften the blow, take a little, yeah. And and hi- the hiring, the pool of people hasn't been great, because there's not many people that want to work in this field anymore. We're lucky right now, we're we're finding a lot of people and hoping, we have a lot of people in training right now too, in EMT classes and the fire academies and so forth, so. We're hoping by this time next year, there'll be plenty more in the pool, so to speak, to pick from, and that would give us, like, just to give you an example today, I only have three people working, but there's nobody to work on the ambulance here, I have nobody to drive the ambulance, so. I can't force, because we've always had a full-timer on each truck and then a volunteer or per diem, I can't force a per diem person to work, so. This way here, if somebody called in sick like they did today, I could force the next person in to work, I mean, it's overtime, but at least we know the ambulance would be covered and we'd have a driver for both trucks and whatnot, so.
I said one more question, sorry. Um, when the turnout gear on page one-twenty? How many firefighters does the town purchase turnout gear for?
Seventy-six.
Phil, did you have other questions? Any questions, yes, Carol?
The knock boxes, they're at the schools?
Yep.
Is this something that should come out of the school budget? And businesses, is this something that they should be paying for? We should mandate that they have a certain box and have them pay for that cost?
They have, they all have the box, we do mandate that on the commercial buildings and and other things. We have a lot of private homeowners that have them as well, we have gates that have the same key. So they they have the box already, we have the keys, but over time, just, I mean, this is like a national, nationwide program. We haven't, over the, over the time, the town hasn't kept up on, I guess we haven't, I shouldn't say we haven't kept up, but the technology's changed so much and 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 now we have more people that have access to these things, so we're just trying to protect ourselves, I guess, from any liability, so the key is locked up, so we can, it kind of gives us a little continuity on who has the key, who's using it, who doesn't.
Okay, so these knock boxes will be there, like in the town's possession, they're not part of?
Yeah, well, so they have a, they have a box, they go, like, if you go to Hannaford, I shouldn't say use Hannaford, but I don't know, Duncan Donuts has one, but it's a box about this big on the, on it, with a little red thing on the front. The master keys, the keys to the entire building, everything that's in that building is in that box. We have a key just to that box, and then it gets us in the building without breaking the doors and obviously, if the place is on fire, we're gonna do what we have to do, but this is like for alarms and our water problems, we have it all the time at Colonial Marketplace, you know, the sprinklers will freeze and flood. So in the middle of the night, this just gives us quicker access, but all, every school has one, every, they're all at the main entrance on the address side of the building, so. But like I said, we we have the keys on the trucks, but.
It just makes the key safer.
Correct, so if somebody doesn't like grab it, and not not saying that we don't trust any of our people, but if somebody grabbed the key and lost it and then somebody grabbed it, they'd have access to all these places, so.
Now, I'm gonna piggyback on that question, because it kind of just brought thoughts, so like, if Duncan Donuts has a box, and you're gonna, you're looking to buy five boxes, and you're gonna.
So we're not buying for Duncan?
So we're not buying for private, like, businesses and?
No, these are, these, so we, they've already bought the box on the buildings. We have the key, like I said, like St. Joseph's College, every, the dorm building, every dorm, every building over there, when you walk in, so if somebody, if somebody, if the key landed in the wrong hand, somebody could go open that box and then have the master key to every, every room in the building, or or wherever the place is. We have them secured, like I said, it's just like a, it's a four-digit code, they're mounted to the trucks. But our problem is, what if something happens? What if somebody quits and, you know, we have a disgruntled employee and they decide to grab the key and, you know, this, this way here, like, we can't take the key, it's it's in a, it's in a lock, and they electronically, from dispatch, punch in a code, and then it releases it out, but like, it, like, I'd have to call in on the radio and release the key, so they know I have the key.
Where are these five boxes going?
So these are gonna go on our, like, the ambulances, our five busiest trucks, they'll be mounted on the truck electronically. But like I said, we had it, we had them in the capital for, to buy them for all of them, that we figured would kind of try before we, you know, spend all the money on all of them, just to make sure the program's gonna work, because, you know, they're they're cellular base, so some places in town, as everybody knows, we don't have the greatest coverage, so we want to make sure they work for us, so.
Any other questions?
I can make a motion if we're ready?
We're ready.
Yeah, let's do it.
All right, I make a motion to amend on page one-twenty-four, to remove the eight nozzles for eighty-five hundred and four-foot hose of fifteen hundred feet for eleven thousand five hundred.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion to amend the, very good, unanimous, and are we ready to make a motion to move everything forward?
I move that we move everything forward as amended.
Second that, all in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Onto recreation.
On page one-seventy-one, to start on six-eleven. The first part is salaries, which has been stated before, reflects the salaries in COLA for the recreation department and the parks laborer. Under telephone, we have, we stayed about, we stayed average on that, no increase on that. On the postage and printing, I did reduce that by five hundred, because we are moving to be more digital than we are in regards to printing, so I did reduce that. Under parks and facilities maintenance, we're up four, that's just basically everything just kind of going up in price in regards to the fertilizer and flowers, everything kind of shifting upwards, so that that four thousand reflects that increase, you know, and all of the stuff that takes place in that, in that budget line. Contractual remain the same. Standish spectacular, we went up by just seventeen fifty, and that's basically, once again, keeping up with, you know, some of the expenditures and trying to grow that event for for the town, so we just added some of that in there to continue that that growth towards making that event, you know, larger and greater year by year. Fuels and vehicle maintenance, that did jump up a little bit, we did pick up two new-to-us recreation buses that we bought from MSAD Six. So there'll be some fuel that will be added into keeping those buses on the road for our kiddos during the year, and then that's reflective of a little bit of maintenance cost also. The next one is other commodities, that's down, took some items out, only new item on there is the thirty-foot flagpole that I would like to add to Stanis Memorial Park, it does not currently have a flag. So I would like to add that, because we do have tournaments and things that take place out there. That's the only new addition to that, to that budget line. On a new equipment, that's where we went up, looking to replace an outdated mower that needs to go to pasture. So we are looking to replace that mower, and with that mower comes the trailer, which would also haul the tractor down the road, so it would be a dual purpose between hauling the tractor and the newer mower. Which the newer mower would be a little substantially bigger than the current mower that we're currently mowing with. Stopping in between each one, or do you want me to go right to Rich?
I have a question on this. I think, I wonder if it was last year or the year before, we had a budget for new picnic tables?
Yep.
Did we ever get those picnic tables?
Yes, we did, and each year, I'm, and each year, I'm adding to those, to replace the wooden ones that we have out there, so that, I'm remaining, I'm keeping those picnic tables in the budget line, so that we can phase out the wooden ones and move to a, you know, a more sturdier steel picnic table in all of our parks.
On page one-eighty-one, is what, is that where the plow and the storage building would be added?
I think the plow would go in, maybe the storage under Rich Memorial, maybe?
The shed's under Rich Memorial Beach.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, definitely want to add the plow truck there, yes.
We're not there yet, right?
Yeah, while we're out there, I think on, yeah, new equipment.
New equipment, we should add.
We should add the plow here and, yes.
We want to add that for fifteen?
John sent me a text and he said, he thought it was ten, ten would be safe, so ten thousand for the plow.
Which we came down ten thousand, we went seventy-five, sixty-five, so I think that's good.
Okay, yep.
So Phil, you're making a motion to add ten thousand?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we add ten thousand dollars in for a plow for a truck.
I will second that.
All in favor, added ten thousand for the plow, that's unanimous? Any other questions from the council, because I saw Lisa Yoder question.
On page one-seventy-six, the equipment rental compact tractor, is that different from what we were talking about earlier? One-seventy-six on the bottom of the page, I'm wondering if that's different from what we were talking about earlier?
Um, the rentals, that, would that includes the rentals, because we do still rent out other equipment, i.e. postal diggers and things that we do, so the tractor is part of, what is part of that previous regime, but it also encompasses all the other rentals, because we do on occasion have to rent equipment from other places to do jobs in the parks.
I think we should change that to equipment rental miscellaneous, equipment rental not tractor, so we don't specify a certain.
Agreed.
Yeah, because you're, if you're gonna be buying the new tractor, it's coming with a bucket loader, right?
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have to rent one?
We'd have to rent, like, when we do, like, big products, projects, we go out and rent, like, one of those electric, you know, big augers for being.
Right, but not the bucket loader and all that stuff, because you don't have that now.
When that new equipment comes in, we will, that that line will be reduced once we get.
So let's just change equipment rental miscellaneous for three thousand, and that way, we don't show it, it's just a, I agree, a bucket loader.
Motion by Phil, seconded by Jan, all in favor, very good, so that's now equipment rental miscellaneous. Any other questions from the council or from the budget committee?
On this whole thing, or just like?
On the entire.
No, let's pass it.
I do. Under, on page one-seventy-seven contractual, there's seventy-five hundred dollars for tree cutting at parks. I don't think it changed, but if Greg is an arborist, obviously, I'm sure there's some things that you would want to hire out, what is that, what is, what is that for?
That is basically, you know, we've yet to see the Greg's scope of, you know, when Greg gets going, so we do have that still set aside, where if we have to contract out, if the project's big enough, to go out and to have Greg have backup.
Ira.
Yeah, Ira, and tree cutting, when you have to subcontract is, yeah, it's expensive.
You need bucket trucks that go up sixty feet in the air.
So Greg will definitely have an impact on that, you know, and we'll be reflective in next year's for sure, because we're gonna be able to see kind of what we do, but that is reflective of having Ira and somebody else come in if needed to help out.
Any other questions from the budget committee? Other council questions? Oh, yes, sorry, Joe.
Page one-eighty. Are those, and where would they be?
Um, the pickleball nets, we replace, we use removable ones, so they get a lot of wear and tear in them, so we replace about one every year, I think we have four in total. You know, we replace one or two, depending on how how much they're getting used.
Where are they at, he's asking?
They are at Johnson Field predominantly, we did look, we are looking to add pickleball to Mill Street, which means we would add some removable nets up there also. The cornhole cement, we're looking to add a set of those up at Mill Street Park, in the area that we cleared out during our our county grant, our state grant that we did over there, we cleared out some space, looking to add that as an amenity up there, and also to add a set, maybe at SMP, if we can find a space, where they could bring their own cornhole bags, and they'd be, they'd be stationary at each park, at those two parks.
Why cement though? Like, I I don't think I've ever heard of cornboards being cemented, how are they gonna slide, they're gonna tear up your bags, I mean?
Uh, they're they're commercially made, they sell them, they sell them regularly, I mean, I did a little bit of background in them, they seem to, you know, they seem like they're, the gentleman that I spoke to said they they sell them real well, and they're just, they're meant to be.
Seems like we'd be wasting money on them.
I assume the cement, just so they stay stationary and not in the back of someone's vehicle, but I, when I talked to him, he sounded like, you know, I've never played on a set, but I'm assuming if we do move forward, with, you know, I will look for, you know, look for other communities maybe that have invested in them and maybe get some feedback before we step forward.
If people that are gonna play would want to use their own bags, not knowing.
I know I wouldn't, I mean, a set of four bags is over a hundred dollars, I wouldn't use mine.
Yeah, well, like I said, the the investigation that I did, you know, when I, when I called the company, because I, when I was in Kettinbug, that was something that I was kind of looking at trying to do over there too, you know, because they do all sorts of things for it, they seem, and I'm not an avid cornhole player, so I don't know exactly, you know, but if it does pass and goes forward, if it doesn't look feasible, we can always look for an alternative to that. The cement ones are just the ones that they know that they can put out in a park, and, you know, and will remain, will remain there, and that's kind of the only option at this point, other than getting regular and, you know, trying to chain it to something, or so that they. chain it to something or so that they.
Cement bags on the floor.
Yes, Lisa, you had a question.
Can we break that line apart and split the pickleball nets and the concrete cornhole boards, because I'd hate to, you know, make a guess on how much each costs.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm also up in the air about the cornhole, I need to do some research before.
Yeah, we're just looking for additional amenities to add to each park, you know, you know, it's just one of those things that, you know, to add that piece, it's like adding horseshoes, you know, you know, just looking for that aspect of it.
Sounds great, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, well, I, I was skeptical on it too, but.
Joe had a question, then we'll go to Phil.
I just wonder if we can get some more information on these, it may be a picture, what they look like.
I can do that for you.
Thank you.
I noticed you have work boots for $300, and yet I see Public Works is 250 per person. How, it says you have work boots, I just happened to notice it.
That's for.
Don't you think we should do 250 per employee with you too, since they're all cutting and, I mean, I'm just curious where the 300 comes in, where the Public Works gets 250 per employee?
Don't see a problem with that either, that's just.
I mean, you don't buy much of a boot for, if you're going, if you think your whole crew is going to get out of, with $300, so I'd say, I'd rather say 250 per employee, per.
Is that, you're making an official?
I'm making that motion to, the work boots would be 250.
Second that motion, all in favor of the amendment, unanimous, thank you. Any other questions?
That's where the Public Works gets you.
Yes, Carol.
So if you just change this to 2, 250, it's 250 per person.
It's only one person.
That means one person's getting a pair of boots.
It is technically, that boot line is for the one Parks Foreman that we have, that's for, we only currently have.
How many employees do you have?
That's, that get a boot allowance, just Greg.
So there's one Parks Foreman, that's our programmers for aftercare, summer cam.
Yeah, we don't buy footwear for everybody, that, that boot line is for, that boot line is.
As a PPE, they have to have a steel toe boot to go out, the other staff don't require a PPE.
Greg is the only one that gets that boot allowance.
Your part-time people going out without the steel work boots, and I don't know how that opens up a can for us.
So what, yeah, what about Logan or something, if he?
Uh, Mason came with his own last year, but I mean, if we want to look to try to, to do that, I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, you are buying a pair of $250 boots for someone that, you know, might stay with us for the entirety of the season, or might, you know, only stay with us, you know, decide to move on after two weeks, so I guess I'm open to buying them for the.
Should be a lawsuit for a couple hundred thousand.
I agree.
Because some guy has them and the other guy doesn't yet, they're all, they're doing the same job every day, so.
We can put it in there, and if they have them, they don't, we don't need to, but part of our hiring, we have to provide it, good point.
So I would, I would say any employee you have should be allowed a 250.
It just seems like a lot of money for a pair of boots, 250, I mean, I think.
Steel toe.
Steel toes, sneakers are 120 now for a steel toe, it's sneaker.
I've been looking, I mean, I see Timberlands for 180 steel toe.
Yes, it's the law.
It doesn't say they have to spend the 250, it says up to 250, so if you could find boots for a 120 or 140, obviously, but I agree, I don't know the numbers there, what they're required.
That's fine, that's fine.
So we're going to make the motion to make this 500?
I would say 250 per employee.
Up to.
Up to 250 per employee of the.
So we need to make this 500?
Well, how many people?
So there's one full-time and we hire one seasonal.
Okay, so two, yes, okay, two.
I'll make a motion to make it 500.
All in favor of adjusting it to 500, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Chief just showed me a picture of kind of what I was looking at in regards to going back to those concrete boards, they have a, like a marble top to the top of them, so it's a sleek finish that goes on the top, but I'll get, I'll get some more information to you guys with all of that, but that's how they slide, I guess.
I can picture what they're going to look like, I'm just kind of getting.
So maybe it's not for the hardcore players, but the family.
Yeah, 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 and it is a park, so I mean, like, I think it's a good idea.
Any other questions for this section?
Make a motion to move the Parks and Recreation budget ahead as amended.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
That's unanimous. Let's go on to Rich Memorial Beach.
All right, Rich Memorial Beach.
A lot of pages just for a beach.
All right, the first line is full-time salaries, it did go up a little bit, we did increase the hourly rate for the individuals that are working down there, and water testing did go up a little, so that it reflective of that, of that increase in regards to the staff members that are down there. Utilities remain the same, the two hotspots that we have, oh no, we went up by two, only because the hotspots increased a smidge, we're looking to upgrade, the ones we have now have been there for a while, so we're looking to get the newer versions of the hotspots down there so that they, they rely heavily on the internet down there in regards to, to phone usage and things like that, because it's just a dead spot down there. Telephones are at zero, no change there. Posters and printing did go up a smidge, cost of, you know, the cost of living, you know, printing our flyers that we make out each year for, for all the people that go down, those bi-folds that give, you know, instructions and rules and regulations to use the beach. The next one is travel expenditures, once again, just up reflective of the jump in the per mile, I think last year was 60 something cents, and now it's 70, so they're just a jump up in, in that aspect. Equipment and supplies, no change there. Contractual, same thing, went up a little. The majority of that 400 is just part of the online registration software fee, had gone up for, you know, a little bit, so that's just reflective of going up on that a little, and that's just basically our MIREX system, that's, you know, pays a little bit of the usage to sign people up, and then, you know, advertising, I believe, stayed the same. Training, that went up a little bit to 300 because Gail, who no longer works for us, was our CPR cert, certifying person, she no longer here, so I have to look for an alternative person to treat, to teach our employees down there CPR.
FYI, the chief's got some contacts, I know CC is certified to teach it, so we do have other in-house.
Yep, that's perfect.
When you get going.
So we'll be looking for that aspect. Portable toilets, that's no change there. Water testing, no change there. Fuels and lubricants, no change there. Apparel and tools, went up reflective of just the cost, you know, I deal a lot with Brady Screen Print, and then just, you know, the price of their stuff has gone up, so I just moved that cost to be reflective of that, and other commodities went up a little bit, looking to upgrade a few things in the shack this upcoming spring. One of those being the solar batteries that they use down there to power everything, so we're looking to even increase our battery power down there and get rid of the units that have been down there since probably the beginning, opening of Rich Memorial, so we had a guy come down and kind of take a look at it, looking into those options. The new equipment, basically, this went up, only went up, I'm looking to secure a mobi mat, which is a mat that gets laid across the beach, it's about 100 feet long, and so that people that utilize our handicap wheelchairs don't have to push against the sand to get their loved one into the water, so basically it'll be laid out at the beginning of the day, rolled up at the end of the night, and then putting into storage, I just think that's going to be an amenity that's going to be super helpful, and then obviously the storage shed in there for the kayaks, the paddle, and the beach wheelchair. And that's it for 6/11.
Questions for Matt on the budget?
Got just one, a couple maybe, on travel and expenses, at 1,005, it looks like you, zero year-to-date, what would you be using that for, because what I'm seeing is you've spent nothing year-to-date in your travel expenses.
We have an individual that drives the water testing.
Say that again?
Then we have an individuals that work for us down there, that take the tests that they do with the water, and then they drive it to the laboratory that does our testing for E coli and all of that stuff, so they take their, you know, they, they drive that material over there, so that would be for the travel expenditures.
Unless I'm reading this wrong, I'm showing year-to-date, you haven't spent anything last summer or through the year, is that right, or am I reading this wrong?
Scott, did we not?
They apparently didn't put in for reimbursement.
They all know it's there, and I'll have to reinforce that for them this, this spring.
I just, I don't want to keep adding money to the stuff that's not getting used.
Yep, I'll reinforce that with them this year to make sure.
There were a couple others, equipment maintenance is zero so far this year, and there was another one, commodities, I think year-to-date, I'm not seeing a lot on commodities either, that you use for $2,000, year-to-date, it looks like zero, so.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, if we aren't spending it, we need to readjust these lines.
I think last year was my first go at Rich Memorial, so there was a lot of, like, just learning the ins and outs of just being down there and what they needed, you know, this year, I'm going to take, you know, the approach will be different because I've seen it, and now I know what they need down there, kind of what we're looking to add in, what we need to do to improve it down there, so with the commodities, the new equipment and stuff like that, 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 those lines will be used more heavily, you know.
So what's a commodities, what would be something you'd use out of the commodities line?
The commodities line would be, you know, water for the staff, it would be, you know, maybe, you know, the first aid stuff, you know, things that we need, you know, down there, they require, like, fans, you know, you know, things like that.
Signs too, Matt, what did you use for signage down there, was that like our no parking?
Yeah, no parking signs, we continuously upgrade our signs from better visibility, you know, so it's just an overall line for just.
I just see where you haven't spent any year-to-date, you want to increase another 500, so I, that gets me nervous, I see year-to-date hasn't been spent any, so why do we want to go from 2,000 to 25, when you didn't spend any of the 2,000 the year before?
Scott, nothing was spent out of that line?
So I guess I would probably make a recommendation that.
Got you, so an error perhaps?
Yeah, kind of impossible to, yes. If we want to move it down, so that's fine, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm saying, you know, when you, you know, when you got a business and you're not spending money, you don't increase that line, another, a line more if you didn't spend any of it the year before.
But do you foresee that you're going to need 25 this year?
I got, there's a lot of stuff that I know that I want to do down there this year to improve the situation down there, I have no problem being, you know, relative, moving it down and being a little bit more money-conscious in regards to that piece than addressing it again next fiscal year if I come up short on a few items, but I would say if, that's a fine item to decrease if we think it's.
I'm going to make a motion to.
Oh, can I ask a question first?
What, I see your hand up there.
Is this, is this the line where the solar batteries would be?
That's what he said.
That'd be under, the solar batteries would be under.
You were mentioning under commodities, yeah.
Yes. Yep, so they'd be coming out of commodities, yep.
Do you have an estimate for those?
I, I do not, he stopped down because we had issues last spring with some of them, he repaired them and made mention to, you know, contact before spring starts to take a look at putting, you know, maybe replacing them, he didn't necessarily, they said that they could survive for a while, it just, it just depends on, you know, the usage that they're getting by the people down there, so.
Yeah, so like, so you're saying that we didn't use any last year, or did we use it and just got, there was an error in filing or reimbursement, so we did use the money?
Yes.
You just can't show it.
Yeah, it's possible, yeah.
Right. So I mean, I, and if you do take 2,500 this year, I would say that if you, I mean, it's $500, I mean, if you have, if you have leftover, then you would still, that would roll into the next year and you would ask for less next year.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of keeping it, but.
Sorry to make a motion.
Well, I, I really think we got to hold them account, you can't say, well, I got money, but I took it out of another account, so now this one still has all this money in it, I mean, I think we need to make sure, because we're assuming they did it out of another, we don't know, so I would still like to reduce this back to 500, $500 back to the 2,000 that was put in.
Question from Lisa.
A couple of questions, page 189, back to the travel, they're driving 750 miles, or are they doing multiple trips per year?
They do multiple trips, yep.
It's required, we have to water test.
Yeah, but do you have to drive, or can you mail it, is it like?
Oh, they, because of the importance of making sure we have what the levels are, they, they request that it's been, they drive it, they drive it and drop it off, so they go multiple times, like, once a week.
Okay.
Like, they'll go down on the weekends, yeah, the company will come during the week, but it will not come on the weekends, so it's like on Saturday where they water test, they drive it off, drop it off, and then we get the report back on whether or not the water levels are.
Thank you, thank you, and then page 198.
Point of order, I think we have to finish talking about, before we move on, just finish that, we're going to make an amendment to, Phil, you was going to make an amendment, but I think there's a question on what we were talking about, we have to finish that before we move on to other pages, is what I'm saying, so we don't get kind of lost into it.
You want to make the motion to adjust?
I would like to reduce it back to the.
Earl has a question about that line item.
On that line item?
Yeah, on the 2,500, so I, I guess it's more of a comment, I, I see why you raised it 500, and I don't think that we should handicap our Parks and Rec director because of something somebody else, a mistake somebody else made by not reporting things, so I think it's, it's, I get the point of it all, or I really do, but it's 500 bucks for Parks and Rec that the entire town uses, well, okay, I'm not going to say the entire town because somebody will call me out on that, but I'm going to say the majority of the town uses.
Yes.
And Izzy, you had a question or comment?
Congratulations on taking the job over, because it's not easy, a couple of things, I don't, I, I think the issue of testing is real, it is really important, and I don't know if everybody understands the schedule of how frequently it has to be done, when it has to be done, so that the beach can stay open, and I can't quite imagine that anything is going to be not more expensive this year, especially with laboratory stuff and all the, the kits and things that are needed, I'm sure the price of everything is gonna, is gonna go up, but that, the, the testing is just really, really key.
And we put that on staff to, to put in their mileage requests, they, I mean, we, we got a bonus if they didn't, but really, they're entitled to it and should be doing it, but not all staff put it in, as they should.
So going back, Phil, did you want to make the amendment?
Just going to pass, I, I really tried to save money, if that's what, we're not against, let's just move on.
Matthew, what, I'm curious, do you have a number, Scott, so this obviously makes us some money, so what, what's our revenue line of Rich and versus expenses, because it does, like, not all of this is taxpayer money, it's user-driven to some degree?
I'd say about 20 grand.
Okay, it brings in 20 grand, and what is the total expense of this?
I know we had like seven, we sold 738 passes last year, so, you know, definitely, there's definitely.
So 71,000, so 50 of it is roughly?
Took in 13,000 last year, each, we spend. 28,000.
So half of it, perfect, thank you.
Is that true?
So there's a really sweet app called Everland that anybody can download on their phone, and it tracks mileage, I use it all the time for my nonprofit, so if this would be something that's helpful for staff to do their mileage, it does it all for them.
Oh, is it a free app?
There's a free option to it, I pay because I do a ton of miles, but there is a free option, it's called Everland.
Thank you.
Lisa?
One more question, page 198, the storage shed, is that new, or is that repairs, is that the one we were talking about earlier?
That's the one that, that was removed from the capital plan.
Okay, thank you, and it's 12, not 13?
Yeah, it was originally 12, yeah.
Thank you.
And we, we discovered too, staff went down there for some training when we were closed, and we were shocked at the amount of people that trespassed and went down there, so really, to secure our items is imperative.
Any other questions from the council or from the Budget Committee? Let's make a motion to move it forward.
I'll make a motion to move it forward.
All in favor of moving it forward, unanimous, thank you. And since Matt, you still up here, let's go to the recreational special revenue. Which is page 243.
First part. Uh, first part of the special revenue is salaries. The increase here is basically reflective of additional hires due to growth at our before and after care for the kids that attend each kid, you know, each, you know, required to keep a 1 to 13 ratio, so we were continuously hiring, we're growing the before and after care, so the reflective change in that staffing is mostly due to additional staff procurement and the commensurate raises that we, we, to keep them, you know, from, to remaining with us to be competitive for our before and after care program that wraps in with all of the rest of our vacation weeks, you know, all that stuff, so that's basically, that, that is reflective of that change. Telephones for the part-time staff, that went up a little bit. We added phones and iPads last year for our online program. We use Pick My Kid for pickup and drop-off for our kids, and then we do have additional phones that are given out for all the directors of our three major camps, for parents to reach out to and for them to communicate with. So that's reflective of the iPads and then the additional phone for one of the camps. Postage and printing, we went down by 500. Once again, we went, we're very heavily on the digital part for, for our department. Parks and facilities maintenance, that's, that's zero, no change. Contractual, the 450, basically a small increase in our registration software program and and a small increase in the professional association, the, the training, just to make sure that all the, you know, everybody in our department has the ability to do the training that they would like throughout the year. Summer recreation, once again, it went up a little bit. You know, cost of the, basically, a chunk of that is the contractual services, field trips, Fun Towns, Bosh Town, you know, go, they go up. Every place that we go has, you know, increased their fees, so we put that in there, and then what we get from MSAD-6. Be interested to see, you know, this year be a good gauge for us in regards to our two new buses and whether or not we can reduce that the transportation for the, for the schools with the addition of our two new buses. Vacation week programs, same thing, went up 900, basically, just because of the cost of everything is increasing. Youth sports, went up 1,300, pretty much only, we are now required to have custodial staff on-site for our basketball program, so we had to, that's a new program we did, so we have to add that in there. Scholarship program, we went up a smidge, just to make sure that everybody is taken care of. We do expect an increase in, in, and as we grow in regards to our scholarship and our, and our financial aid packaging. Special programs and community events, went up just a little bit with that. Basically, we added just a little bit more into the special events, because we're gonna try to do a little bit more pocket events here and there throughout the year. That Annaliese spearheads that, is trying to get that accomplished, so we added a little bit into there to, to help out with that. Before and after care, pretty self-sufficient. We went up just a little bit on that for, just mostly for supplies. Dalton Senior Programming, went up to 2,000, basically because Norma's doing a little bit more contractual situations. She brought in like chair yoga and a few other things. So our contractual went up a little bit on that. Rentals and sponsors, sponsorships, those are, took that down a little bit due to the additional equipment that we're gonna be getting, hopefully, when the process is over. Fuels and lubricants, that went up, once again, with the addition of the two new buses that we have. It's gonna go up, and so they'll be heavily used during the summer and frequent, a little less frequent, you know, on the other seasons, but very heavily during the summer. Other commodities that went down altogether, and then there was no change in new equipment.
Questions from the council for Matt on the special revenue?
Make a motion to move it forward?
I'll see it from the Budget Committee.
Oh, oh, I thought you already did.
But Heidi?
How did we buy the buses? Like, where is the money?
Special revenue.
It was $1 from the school department.
I knew buses about 120, and with the agreement that we made with MSAD-6, I got the, we got the buses for a dollar. There was some small maintenance fees and then, you know, getting it, you know, painted, so, you know, it all came out of special revenue.
Any other questions? Here's Karen, uh, Lisa.
Um, I have a question. The buses, if you guys are not using them, do you rent them out, or is that not allowed?
Uh, I don't know, like, that's.
It's not allowed?
AP could use one.
Heidi?
Um, drivers for the buses, what do you have, we have for driving the buses?
I currently have my CDL, and I'm able to drive the buses right now. I'm driving our early releases and our vacation weeks, and we're lucky enough to have four awesome ladies from the district that also, during vacation weeks, they have time off and they drive from us, and then they also drive for us this summer. My plan is to have both of our, the teenagers to have one of our buses and then utilize the other one for the littles, and probably. I didn't move too much around the rentals because our camp is growing, you know, so I didn't reduce what we were gonna ask for from MSAD-6 until I can see. I like to see what kind of situation we look like kiddos-wise, you know, once the summer's over.
And in an emergency? Say it.
Yeah, well, I did buy the second bus on, partially because I'm a nervous Nellie, and when I, when we have a bus go out, if it does have an issue, because they are used buses, but they are very well-maintained, if it does go down, I have that second bus that I can have somebody scurry over if we have to break down.
Even the town manager.
Yeah, town manager, oh, the town, oh, I, I forgot, our illustrious town manager also has, her CDL and has driven my bus.
I drove the bus to pick it up the first time.
You have his school bus license.
I have a CDL with a B passenger, it's not a school bus.
Yeah.
Special programs and community events. Maybe two or three years, Parks and Rec sponsored concerts in the park.
Yep.
Steve Falls. Plan to continue that?
We do still have the summer concert series. That is based, last year, Gail had cut and spearheaded that, and I learned a little bit from Gail, but we get our sponsorship from Norway Savings, which covers the cost of the band, which is the predominant cost for that. We do print signage for them, and we do try to offer to other amenities, but majority of summer concert series gets sponsorship from, from the bank. So, you know, that's, it eases up our spending on that, on that particular item. We are looking to move to, that to six bands this year instead of three, and start it on like an every Wednesday basis, so I'm, I'm looking to see if that's gonna be a good addition for us.
And that would be in Steve Falls?
In Steve Falls at the gazebo, yep, right across from the street park.
Okay. Thank you.
I just got one question to Scott. Scott, last year, I think we appropriated 4,000 for maintenance and fuels, and we're already up to 7,200 in that department. Where does that, where, how do we pick that money up? Was it, what account would that come out of? Because we still got four months to go, and it was like we're, year-to-date, already at 7,000, and we appropriated 4,000. So we're over by 3,000 for fuel and lubricants. Where does that money, what account would that come out of to carry him, that extra money for the next four months?
From unassigned fund balance.
Unassigned fund balance.
The special, the special revenue fund is funded by user fees.
Yep.
So the user fees come in, it's out of it, and if there are.
Glad he didn't move you up to 17,000, because obviously you're not having the buses and not doing it, but you're, we're over by 115% as we speak of a week or so ago on that account from a year.
I anticipated delving into the special revenue, because the buses were at the moment kind of thing, it's all I could, like, I had to pull it as soon as I could, so I did anticipate having to utilize special revenue to, to carry me through.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's just, it's worthy of saying, sorry, Scott, that the programs are paid for by the users, not the taxpayers, and that special revenue account is money beyond that in there, so it pays for staff, et cetera.
And I believe there was a repair that came up on one of the most.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we did have a couple of repairs. I mean, like I said, they weren't new to us, but they had been on the road for a little bit. We got due diligence from the mechanic at the bus barn and our mechanics here that they were in sound shape, but there was some maintenance and some stuff that had to be done to make sure that it was gonna be on the road and be, be safe for our kids to, to drive in, so there was some expenditures on that end. All coming out of special revenue, so it wasn't a ding out of anything else.
Any other questions for Matt? Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we move this forward.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Have a good weekend.
Are you leaving?
At this time, we will jump back into the fund stuff and go to general administration.
Let's go to 12. 12 o'clock, take a break.
We're in general administration, page 27.
Okay, so salaries are based off the COLA and the other half position for front counter and code, no, assessing, excuse me. Telephone, that's our home system, and also provides our fiber for our internet. Postage is for postage. I, you know, we spent 10,000, over 10,000 last year, and left it the same. No change in travel. This is travel for training for the town manager, staff, our staff. Subscriptions, the annual fees for the main towns and, main town and city managers association and international city managers association plus the Port Press Herald. Equipment maintenance, this is for our copy machine, multi-purpose machine, does more than just copies, faxes, et cetera. And also our UNIS accounting slash tax collection slash motor vehicle et al system that we use. We're proposing adding payroll timekeeping. We currently use paper time sheets at the, right now, and we're proposing bringing us into the 21st century and getting on electronic. Cut down on errors, because people aren't mistaking sixes for nines and zeros and et cetera. And also, in addition to that, UNIS will be, will be hosting the server. They take the liability on any server crashes. They're responsible for getting us back up and running. They take care of all the upgrades. Hardware and software increases, upgrades, so that's what that is for. Contractual is for our leases with the public water districts for the beach, the boat launch, and one other place across from 237. Now, now, it's the, right next to the public water district shack there, right inside. Maybe Phil, you know what that.
What's that?
Across from the water district, 237.
Yes.
Where, you know, they have that shack that, isn't it called something?
You called it a shack, I'll agree with you, I guess.
Well, repay a lease for that dollar or something. Training, training for manager and staff. Audit services are for our NOR, are required to have every year. Legal services for legal bills. I dropped that, thinking we won't, we had to budget for the impact fees that we had legal, legal services for. So now that that's in place, I dropped that. Advertising is for all public announcements, any searches for department heads or staff, the RFPs, they're miscellaneous. Office supplies, we now have a couple of new employees, and we overspent that budget by $1,000 last year, so I increased it by two. Commodities, for employee recognition, flags and holders for the veterans. Any flowers for any staff who, that may, you know, have experienced loss of level one. Any administrative meetings, the stuff that we have. Town reports, for anyone coming in requesting a town report, that's to pay to print it. And then new equipment is for any miscellaneous things we might need, file cabinet chairs, et cetera.
Questions for Scott? Give me any, yes, Lisa?
Sorry, um, the Xerox copiers, is that, is that for purchasing, repairing, renting?
Leasing.
Leasing, thank you.
Anything else from the Budget Committee or the council for Scott? Make a motion to move it forward if there's no questions.
Make a motion to move it forward.
Second?
All in favor of moving it forward? Cable television. Page 43.
All right.
So this is for more than our cable television. It started off as cable television, it's now also covers our technology. First line contractual pays for our outstanding television crew that tapes all of these lovely meetings that we have throughout the year. Commodities is for any supply you may need. Not only do we livestream, but we also record all these meetings, so that takes DVDs. New equipment, so this would be for any maintenance and any replacement of computers, keeping them up to, up to date. This year, as you can see in the note, Windows 10 is being sunset in October, and we, so they will not be, Microsoft will not be providing any more updates, security updates, so we need to upgrade to Windows 11. We've gone through and identified which computers can take those upgrades, and we have multiple computers that can't. And so we need to purchase new computers with Windows 11. So that's why the 17,000 in, in there, normally I do three to four per year. Hit it all at once this year, unfortunately. Internet and webpage, this is for not only the internet, also pays for our all our IT subscription fees that we have to have, like email spam filtering, and any offsite backup that we do. Our email system, which is Office 365. Our firewalls, we're now required to do multi-factor authentication, which I'm sure some of you are probably familiar with, where you get a text on your email after you put in your password for, to get on any website. We also do cybersecurity training for the staff, and also pays for all of the spectrum that we subscribe to at the different, down at the transfer station, the public works, Station 3, all have cable and TV, or cable and, and internet access, which they also have firewalls and we're able to communicate, communicate with those offsite buildings. And then regional public access, that's the annual subscription that we pay to be part of the Saddle River Community TV. part of the Saffron River Community TV.
I just wanted to ask you about cybersecurity in terms of, you know, across the country, towns and hospitals.
Yeah, you know, I was actually just gonna put a plug in, so, no, it was perfect timing. I was gonna put a plug in for Scott. He wears many hats. I had gone to a conference, so this training paid for itself. We're working with the University of Maine at Augusta. Their students try to, like, it's, long story short, hack our system, tell us where our inadequacies are. They'll help us fix it. So Scott's working with, uh, UMA about that and we've receiving grants. So they'll tell us where you're lacking and help us apply to grant. So we really were covered A to Z to that new program.
Yep. I was just wanting to make sure.
Yes, it is important. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott?
So we've increased the code enforcement budget to add another person because of the increased development in town. Has there been any discussion to, um, making the planning board workshops televised?
There has not been any discussion. We could do that if, if so does I. Um, I've not heard any, any requests at this point, so that wasn't put in the budget.
How much would it be to get it put into the budget?
Uh, how many planning board, what, do we have, twelve?
Schedule one, they schedule, I mean, they obviously have time, they have space for one a month, but I don't, you know, not, but I'm gonna have one every month.
You have to budget in case they do, right? So you would just do twelve?
Half hundred.
I would, I would do eight, just because I don't, we wouldn't have one every month.
Well, eight hundred dollars for... I will make a motion that we add eight hundred dollars to the cable television for the planning board workshops.
I'll second that.
All in favor of that amendment?
Well, and I'd also have to check with our, our cable operators, make sure that they're available.
Available, right.
She's giving us the thumbs up. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to ask you about, uh, special, um, opportunities for, or needs for the hiring of staff to do, you know, like, for example, we may have a candidate forum and, uh, in terms of the upcoming elections. So just wondering, you know, is the money in the budget to make sure the staff can be hired for extra things? And you may have already discussed that, but I...
I think in the past, we frowned upon that. It was part of, if the, a party wanted to have it, they were responsible for paying for that. The town was not, uh, hiring anything for something like that.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, it's a nonpartisan thing. That's why I, um, I'm asking, you know, I mean, it has nothing to do with parties. It's more making sure the information...
I think we said no, that the town wasn't gonna, I think the party, that whoever, yeah, we didn't pay for it last year. I know, we were, I was asked that question.
But you understand why I'm asking?
Yeah, of course, of course.
Because it, it's really...
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan and, and, uh, you know, they're certainly...
Mm-hmm. I just know that we said no last year.
Yeah. What about this year?
It's not, it's not for me for now. We'll talk about it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there are times when things have to be broadly, um, put out there for the community. So, thank you.
I'm pretty sure that the meetings are about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a meeting, so eight hundred dollars wouldn't be enough for eight meetings. Should be a thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, yeah. I was just gonna...
Scott, get a little closer to that microphone, would you please?
Sure, how's that?
Thank you.
I was gonna, uh, absorb it somewhere, but that would be very helpful to increase it.
So amend it to a thousand?
Thousand dollars?
That would cover.
So...
I second that.
Okay, as amended, thousand dollars, thank you. Any other questions?
Catch.
Make him hear a motion to move this forward, Matt.
I move that we move this forward with our amendments.
Seconded by John, all in favor?
Yeah, sorry, yes, seconded.
Ruth, uh, Ruth is still ten minutes out with lunch, so we'll keep going for a few more minutes.
Let's move to town council, page fifty-one.
So Scott and I and Brandon spoke. We, um, I asked Scott to add new chairs for council and maybe we could save these chairs for you guys, so we have some extra nice chairs, um, just so they're matching. Um, and we also talked about having, um, the council have iPads or something like that. And so we already spoke to IT so that we could reduce our paper usage and ease of emailing instead of paper.
So salaries, that's the council stipends. Products and materials, if, uh, any new counselors would like to attend the new counselor work, uh, training in Augusta, that's available. Subscriptions, this is our annual subscription to NMA. It's also our subscription to Greater Portland Council of Governments. It's a, and a subscription to that as well as a subscription to PACS. I don't know what that stands for. Uh, but, uh, I believe it has something to do with the roads.
Yeah. But, um, yeah, it's the area transportation.
Okay.
PACS.
Contractual, uh, to actually pay for, uh, the trainings if, for new counselors or for that member, any council member, if they wanna attend a training. Standing committees, zero again last year. Advertising, um, yeah, we're budgeted for seven thousand. We actually spent twelve in advertising fees last year. Uh, I increased it to ten. Um, it's not gonna be twelve every year, so, but it is going up. And then council contingency, as Tasha mentioned, this is where we budgeted not only for the council contingency, but also for, uh, the new council chairs and iPad slash, uh, Windows laptops, whatever we find necessary, uh, to, this, uh, paper business.
Any questions for?
Technically have a conflict?
Why?
Where the council and those of us staying on are voting on our own. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
The what?
I don't know a way around it, though.
No, I don't know a way around it either. I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, and so it wasn't really, it was initiated by me. And so I feel like it's not like one specific person was asking for something. I just feel like our chairs, for those who don't know, you sit in them and they scooch lower and lower and lower. And for laptops, it makes sense.
That's the public...
Sorry, cases that, uh, I was shoveling somebody's roof. Hi, Todd Lenny, Spear Road. Um, I have
sat in those lovely seats for six years and as a planning board member, I've sat in those seats. Those suck and are horrible and you have to sit there for hours. And the reality is, yes. I bring it up all the time, Tasha, that the reality is, is that these chairs are uncomfortable and for long meetings, et cetera. And because I'm up here, I will mention the fact is that on the stipends also, by the way, I've, for years have been bugging the council about increasing the stipends for the council and have gotten voted down every year. Our, our stipends are low too. But the cases of chairs are something, if you have to sit in here on monthly meetings, uh, for the planning board, there's always one bad chair and you come to the meetings early to make sure you don't get the bad seat. Cause if you come late to the planning board meetings, you get the horrible seat, Jen, and it's horri, like, you can...
Oh, I know.
You literally move that seat to the one, the last person is the one.
It's on the end.
So, I feel your pain, but yes, they need better chairs. Sorry.
Hi, do you have a question?
Um, on page fifty-five, there's a line item for Main Tourism Association dues. Are we just not, um, paying those anymore? We're not part of the association, Main Tourism Association of Town?
Correct, yeah, we haven't been, we haven't been a part for many years now.
We partner with the chamber and the chamber does a lot of advertising for the town.
Okay.
And Carol?
So I, I would argue that you guys are not voting for things for yourself because the chairs are not personal. They don't belong to you, neither do the iPads. They belong to the town. So what you're doing is you're voting on an item for the town that you use, but it doesn't belong to you.
All said.
Yeah, well, so Lisa was first and then we'll come to John. Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, quick one, the, the advertising, page fifty-eight. Is there a breakdown of how many ads we put out there? Ten thousand, we spent twelve thousand dollars last year for town council ads?
Uh, it, it's council, it's...
Yeah, and by law, we have to advertise our meetings.
Right, but, um, how, ten, twelve thousand dollars worth?
Yeah.
Mary, was any of that for the election?
So, uh, I want...
Will you come to a, a mic, please?
Microphone.
Thank you.
For clarifying.
A lot of that advertising amount comes from elections, public hearing notices, ordinances that are adopted, um...
Thank you, Mary.
He's, he's waving to me. I'm not sure what he's saying. Um, so, so that kind of thing.
Okay, all right, that makes more sense, thank you.
Some of the advertising we do, um, like for liquor licenses and stuff, we seek reimbursement from the applicant for that, so we do get some of that money back.
Okay, so it's basically for anything that we put in the paper. It's not strictly for town council stuff. It's, it's an ad that we put in.
It's, it's the advertising we do to...
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
People know what we're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Um, I would just say that, uh, I am in favor of the iPads or laptop, um, is something that I brought up. Um, when I came on the council last year, um, I would leave a meeting with way more paper than this and I've started collecting it to see how much I would actually have. And then if it's just, um, and I have a tote of like, just paper. And so I'm, I'm in favor. I think it's gonna save us money in the long run, um, from printing, time-wise, uh, just everything. So I just wanna say that.
Anything else?
Got some questions?
Go ahead, Phil.
First of all, on, uh, the, uh, what was I showing you? On dues and subscriptions, the, uh, bottom three, I don't know why they keep showing up. Freiburg visit is center box. We got rid of that six or seven years ago. I don't know why they, and the tourism, I think was the same thing. We were promoting the one thirteen corridor. So we had a lightbox in Freiburg and showed all the trail down to Portland, showed all of our businesses, you know, the pizza shops, the, uh, campgrounds. And it was really a nice deal. And then, um, shortly after I left council, I guess they decided it wasn't a good deal anymore. But it was, I thought it attracted a lot of business down through Standard. So if we're not doing this, I don't know why we have these every year in here. I'd like to see them moved out. And on the, um, contractual, um, at twenty-eight five, I'm not sure what the, what, we're year-to-date at twenty-seven hundred of the fifteen thousand last year that we had. I'm not sure how much laptops cost and how much chairs cost, but are they gonna cost thirteen thousand dollars?
It's, uh, fifteen thousand for the council contingency and then the remainder is for the iPads and the chairs.
Just didn't wanna wipe it out.
So you don't think it was gonna be, you think it's gonna be around thirteen thousand for the iPads and the chairs?
Uh, probably a thousand per device, seven, that's seven thousand.
Okay. I was just curious, it seemed like a lot, thirteen thousand.
You just didn't wanna get all this, then have no money left over.
Right. But I do say that, yeah, twenty-eight thousand, I, I agree there, but I just don't know if we need the fifteen, where we only bud, budget out year-to-date twenty-seven hundred of the fifteen thousand last year.
Yeah, I budgeted, uh, fifteen thousand for the contingency, nine thousand for the devices and then, uh, five hundred per chair. And I budgeted for nine chairs instead of seven. Well, there's nine.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree with the chairs and stuff. I just don't know if we need a total number, twenty-eight five. I, I'd like to, because where we didn't use a lot of that fifteen thousand last year that we have in there.
Once he spends it, we'll be down to fifteen.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we'll spend it all, but. And, um, another thing, you know, I know people don't like to talk about it, but, uh, salaries as town councilors, uh, I don't think we've got a raise in, I don't know, seven, eight, ten years maybe. And we all know how many hours we're putting in, how many committees we're on. Every year they had more committees, uh, a lot of time involved. And I would like to move that line from ten-five to fourteen thousand, the salaries of the town council. I think that we've, uh, you know, as anybody that works as hard as this council does, uh, out in public, and it's not like we're just here at this meeting. I don't know how many calls I get a month. I'm sure you all get about the same. Um, so I would like to increase that line to fourteen thousand even from ten thousand five hundred for the salaries line.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ask a technical question?
Correct.
Uh, this is my first year budget process. I'm kinda learning by fire. By pushing this forward today, does that necessarily mean this is a final item in the budget? This is just so we can be pushed forward for discussion?
For discussion and, and move forward. But I, I just feel that, you know, all councils work extremely hard on what they do and the hours we put in at home. I was up at four-thirty this morning going over this budget before I even come here, you know? And if you add the number of hours we put in by the fifteen hundred dollars a year we get, and you go to these other towns and they get four or five times the amount we get. So I, I was gonna say that we would move it to two thousand a year, up five hundred. And that's over seven or eight or nine years since we've got a raise or whatever. And if you back it all down, it's gonna be, uh, we're gonna get ten bucks more a meeting probably for all the meetings. If you add another five hundred, I'm sure we all do at least forty or fifty meetings a year. So you're getting another eight, ten bucks a meeting probably at the most. So that's what I would like to put forward.
Motion, a second, and we need a vote, so...
Is there a motion or a second?
Yeah, we, for us, a second motion.
Phil made a motion, John seconded, so it's time for a vote, so...
I'm ready.
If you're in favor, vote for it.
We gotta vote right, all in.
So three in favor, one, one not, so it carries.
Okay.
Or do we need four?
Need four. Need four to, to pass.
No, you don't, tonight, today, you don't need four. We need a quorum.
Yeah.
To move it forward. All we need is, uh...
Will you say anything?
Drop all.
If Budget wants to say something, go for it. Budget, yeah?
I know that, um, Todd got up and spoke about, about this and he has for the past several years in his time on the budget committee, asked for this. I would like to say that, um, I have no idea what any of your plans are, but if we do this for, if you all make this choice for the council, I would ask that you seriously consider making the same decision for the planning board. Um, they have just as many meetings, if not maybe sometimes more, with sidewalks and whatnot, with all the growth that's going on in the town. There's, um, a lot of, just, I just wanna put that, no pun intended, bug in your ear.
I would agree with that. The planning board until it, you know, a few years ago, never got anything. And we did move that forward. We felt that they needed to get some type of stipend. And I'm not for increasing that. Because like I say, it's getting harder and harder to get people that wanna serve on boards. Uh, not that we're doing it for the money, but it's, um, it should be recognized, I think, that of the hours we're putting in.
And I, I wanna just, I'll say thank you to all of you for doing what you do. I know that anybody that works in government, whether it's local, town, or state, or federal, there's sacrifices that you all make. Um, you know, a vacation isn't just a vacation. You still have phone calls to answer and, and emails to answer. It's not like you get your time off, so to speak, from your regular, you know, job. Um, so thank you all for doing what you do. And I see value in what you're, what you're putting forth, Councilor Pomelo. Um, so, thank you.
Carol?
Um, I'm probably going to be the black sheep here.
It's okay.
I, I, I sat, hence the black, right? Um, I sat on the town council in another town and there was a year and a half that we took a cut. We made a dollar per meeting. And we did that purposely to keep the budget down and because we realized that we volunteered for the position. And it's not, it, it's, it's a volunteer job. It's not a job. Um, we volunteered to sit here on the budget committee too. And this morning I raced in here after coming back from my granddaughter's, um, ice hockey game and just, just made it. So we all have everybody that volunteers for committees or things such as that. We have commitments to our family, to our personal lives, those types of things. And we don't get in this for a pay. We get in this because of the love of our community. So you guys can do what you want, but just know where, where my standing is when it comes to the budget committee. I, when we talk about it, I will not support that. And I, I do appreciate all the hard work you do. And I have been where you have been.
I think every council...
I have been where Brandon is sitting. I have.
I think every council here probably donates more than they, they get. I know, every program in Standard, I... in Standish, I donate too.
I've been there.
If I cut out my donations, it would be tens, I think we, we set aside ten thousand a year to donate to programs in Standish, so it's not doing it for the money, but it's just, you know, it's, we should be compensated for working the hours we work, period.
Lisa, you had a question, then I'll go to you, Maury.
Uh, I'm, I was gonna say what Carol said, it's a position that you ran for, you asked people to vote for you because you wanted it, same thing, we, we ran for it 'cause we wanted it, it, because it's civil duty, it's, it's the civil responsibility that we said we would like to partake in to help our town, so I also would not do an increase, but, yeah, but I one hundred percent appreciate what you guys do.
Maury, if you wanna come on?
I just have a basic question about, um, whether two thousand, or whether, what do, what do you make now, eighteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, um, so, that aside, so, it's five hundred more, okay, um, the question is, how do you, I, you know, with all these little, um, other meetings that you have, how do you document that you actually are attending those meetings, I mean, how does that, how does that work, um, because I get the sense, and I'll just say this, generally, I get the sense that some people are more apt to be at, at some of the subcommittee meetings than others, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, et cetera, et cetera, it's not my place to do that, but, um, if you're talking about a five hundred dollar increase, then you also need to be thinking about accountability, um, I know you work hard, I understand it, um, I do appreciate everything you do, I know these budgets are hard, these decisions are hard, but, um, you know, it's also value for money, and making sure that people really are showing up and, uh, doing what needs to be done, I realize they're emergency sometimes, but, um, the reality is that you volunteer because you're concerned citizens, um, so, thank you.
Lunch is waiting, but let's finish this, uh, go ahead, John.
Well, I would just say that, um, when I ran, I did run for, you know, um, because I wanted to be part of this, I wanted, and I didn't even know that there was a stipend, I was surprised when I was told that I was gonna have one, and so, with that, I mean, if you're gonna say it in, in your, in your way, I mean, that's fine, um, then we should reduce it down to zero, um, but if you're gonna have, uh, if there is a stiping, and it hasn't been touched in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, or whatever, things do grow and go up, um, so at the, if you're gonna have one, then you should be willing to increase it every so many years for the duty or responsibilities that, that come with it, um, so, you either have one or the other, I don't think you have like, hey, we're gonna keep it, and then that's all it's gonna be, um, so either, you know, you have one that's gonna grow and, or, or compensate, or you're gonna have one that goes down to zero, and, and I'm fine with either, so...
I'm fine with zero, I work for a buck a meeting.
You were sitting here, you wouldn't be fine with zero. Thank you.
Well, maybe you would be, I don't, I don't...
Let's get back on track, so there was...
I agree.
We had a three to one, three of four, one opposed, with only four of us here, what does that mean for the motion?
Um, so we talked about that briefly a little earlier, can everybody hear me?
Where are the microphone, Mary?
Just give her a wireless mic.
So, the rules of procedure say that, uh, ordinances, resolutions, and orders need a, a vote of four, um, unclear if this item needs it, I would tend to say no.
Needs a quorum.
But, so the option is to, to vote as you're voting, if you have to reconsider that, you can do that at your next meeting.
Thank you.
You're not locking the budget down until you do charities and everything else, you got another shot.
Point of order, Mary, if every, if I voted no the rest of the day, does that mean that it might not, that we might have to come back in, are you saying we needed a four-oh on every vote today?
Well, uh, you're gonna be here next, uh, on the fifteenth? The fifteenth, is that true? Yeah, so that would be your next meeting, if, if what, if your vote today, um, needs to be looked at, we can get clarification from legal counsel on Monday, whether this, I, I tend to think that this would not need the, the four vote.
The only vote that we need four oh is the capital budget.
Is that this, at the end of the meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you believe that true?
Okay, so then, three to one, and then we move on.
Okay. I, I didn't, I don't think we heard who was the...
I opposed. Go ahead, Carol.
Do you, do you guys use Robert's Rules of Order, because most municipalities do, and do you train your council in those?
At the beginning, we, we do send all new people, um, I send them, um, council duties, manager duties, rules of procedure, and we do offer, uh, online or in-person, uh, training, so yes.
They, they have a little book too, that you could...
Good book, can we get that book?
Yep.
I don't have that book.
So, let's move...
Original one I sent there.
I don't know where you sent it, but...
So let's move this on to, may I make a motion to move it on? Let's make a motion so we can move this forward, so, if you're in favor of the town council as it's been amended, then, all in favor.
We already voted on that. We voted on that already, it was three to one.
Voted on the change, we did not vote on the entire packet. So that's all in favor to move that forward. Now we're gonna take a lunch break. Thirty-minute lunch break.
All right.
...
Wrap this up for the day. So we're going to go to Finance, page seventy-one.
Well, they're my kids. They were raised. Where are we going to next?
Finance, page seventy-one.
Yes, sir.
I'll pass it off to Mr. Fazoldi.
Okay. Page seventy-three, salaries. This is salaries with the COLA. Any extra time or forty hours that we have to do for like cash up or whatever. We have some overtime in here for the clerks and finance staff. And cellphone reimbursement. Page seventy-four, travel expenditures. This is travel to the various trainings that staff go to. I've heard IRS mileage has gone up from sixty-seven to seventy cents. It's factored in, but I was able to drop some because I won't be at the GFOA annual conference this year. Using subscriptions, this is the annual subscriptions to the main tax collectors and treasurers association, as well as the main GFOA, which stands for the Main Government Finance Officers Association, and the International Government Finance Officers Association. Contractual, this line covers recording and discharge of tax liens, tax billing, printing, tax bills that we do. Any of the research done by the abstracter for our recordings at the, for our liens, and foreclosure notices, personal property collections, and support from UNIS to do the tax liens in the system. Training, this is the cost of the training classes for the various associations. You have to be certified for all kinds of topics from accounting to tax collection, investments, payroll, et cetera. Office supplies, this covers the various financial items that we have to purchase, like check stock, calculators, the W-2 forms that we have to purchase, and also the mailing of certified mails, certified liens that we have to do. We have to send them certified by certified mail, registered receipt by law. We do that three times a year. And that's finance.
Any questions for Scott in the Council on Belt Finance? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Lisa.
The cellphones on page seventy-three, cellphone reimbursement of twenty-one hundred.
Yes, that's for two cellphones?
The cellphones from the page one thirty-one are six hundred bucks a month. Is, why is the, why the difference?
Not every department gets the same cellphone reimbursement.
Correct.
You don't use the same plans or all that?
Yes, but some, well...
Yeah, it's, some employees have a different plan, a different carrier.
Oh, you're reimbursing for personal cellphone? Oh.
We give the opportunity, I carry two phones, not all staff want to carry two.
But would it be cheaper to give them a regular cellphone that everyone else uses?
I'm not going to force staff to have two phones.
It's currently in my contract to be reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Motion to move this forward.
Motion to move it forward.
Second.
Moved by Jen, second by John, all in favor. You can hand it over. Thank you. To the Appeals Board, which is page eighty-nine.
No changes on travel expenditures, mileage. No changes in dues and subscriptions for the townsman. Did increase the variance. It's very, the money we spend to record the variances at the registry of deeds, that did get utilized a little more last year, so I increased that a little bit. No increase in training, and no increase in advertising for the board meetings and lead notices.
Any questions?
Small budget.
From the Council or the Budget Committee? Okay.
Motion to move forward.
Okay. I'll second that, all in favor.
Do it.
Thank you. Next will be the building maintenance, which is page ninety-seven.
Salaries, this is the salary for the custodian and any overtime that he may have. Comes in to shovel on these snow days, so he could incur some overtime. Utilities, this is the electric, Portland Water District and CMP rates. I spoke about the CMP a little earlier. Base it off of historical usage and what our rate is. There could be some chance for savings there. It'll all depend on what the rates are in November. We may stick with the standard offer until springtime where the rates are lower. It'll all depend on what MMA says. But that's the current rate and the estimated annual hours. And then the cost for Portland Water District based on what we've spent in the past. Travel expenditures, this is the custodian if he has to do any particular federal travel or errands. Sometimes we have him bring documents down to the attorney in Portland, some of the things like that. Contractual, this is for all the building contractual items that we have from the maintenance on the HVAC system in this building. We have a three-year contract with Honeywell to share the fire station on Stanishneck Road with Gorham. And we, at the end of the year, pay our portion of the utilities for that fire station to Gorham. We have pest control on-site here that we have to maintain. Portable toilets at all the different, from the beach to the nine sites that we do. We have to inspect the fire sprinklers, the fire extinguishers, the kitchen hood in the Sevage Lake room. And then we also pay, we have thirty thousand in there for any facility maintenance items that come up. In the past, for example, the boiler has had issues. That's been used to cover that. Other items in the building that may need that. We use some of it for the roof as well. Cleaning supplies, this is for all the cleaning supplies we use at all the buildings that the town owns. Commodities, this is for miscellaneous items that we pick up, light bulbs, et cetera. Heating oil, propane. This is based off of prior year's consumption, I take an average. And then I've just put out the bid for GPCOG for fuels. We'll see what prices we get back in a couple of months. But I base that off of the Energy Information Agency that makes predictions on what they forecast prices to be. Yeah, I thought assumption the average came down a little bit, so there's a reduction in that line.
Yes, go ahead, John.
The custodian salaries, that, it says overtime forty-eight hours, so he has to get to forty-eight hours and then gets overtime?
No, he, it's forty-eight hours, so anything over forty is overtime, budgeted forty-eight hours of overtime.
So is it time and a half or double time?
Time and a half.
Time and a half? And so is it based on a forty-hour work week, you said?
Thirty-eight.
Yes, anything, anything over forty is time and a half.
Just in there in case he goes over for a storm.
And so he's at fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven for...
Correct.
That's a pretty good gig, I guess. It's more than I get for teaching.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead, Carol.
Just a question on page one oh-two. The facility maintenance repairs is thirty thousand. Can you give me a general idea of what you plan to do this year with that money?
So what is, I'm sorry, the budget?
Page one oh-two, the facility maintenance repairs is in there.
So our whole, this whole building in twenty years basically has not been touched. We had a roofer come, honestly, I'm not kidding. We have so much rot, we had fifty-gallon trashcans with water pouring in them. So we've had rot outside that, we've had to replace some siding. We have definitely, we're, we're going to try to piecemeal the roofs, but the roofs are failing. And like the chief said, the unit is on there, so we're going to have to take it off, repair it, and put it back. And so he said, just last week, it was really snowy and cold, but they did like a bore sample to see like, how, what's the quality of it and is there cement? But literally in twenty years, this building has had no maintenance. So it needs rot addressed and roofing, and so that's probably, that number's low, I would guarantee. Yeah.
For instance, last year we had the boiler issues.
This is going to, so I remember talking about this last year, about the roofs and the taking it off and it'd be cheaper. And well, it's off to do the roof at that time, but we're here doing it again. Is it going to get done this year?
Well, and we just, we were band-aiding it. We didn't have the money to fix it, it wasn't budgeted, it was leaking, and so we like made...
Because I remember talking about it, saying, hey, well, it's off, it's going to be cheaper to do the roof at the same time.
Yeah, we're just budgeting for it.
But are we looking at it's this year it's going to get done?
So the chief just found that out, that's what he was saying. We have to have it engineered before we do it, so we're having to pay engineers to give us a study of what we need to do.
And when's that going to happen?
It's ongoing.
Okay.
Nothing's fast in municipal government.
No, I doubt it, but I believe it, I mean...
No, did you have a question?
I don't have a question.
I had one question on page one oh-two. The two thousand dollars for pest control, what buildings do they cover? Is it just this one, or is it transfer station, other places too?
Aren't they at Public Works?
Town Hall, Transfer Station, Boat Launch, District Three, so I would say all the buildings.
You tell them you have a better job.
Hire another company.
How do you know?
Or hire another company.
There's a lot of pet peeves out there that I see that could be touched up, but anyways. Very good. Any other questions or comments for the section?
I would say Scott might want to consult with someone that's in the pest control industry to find out what's going on.
Do you know anybody?
Not right, not today.
Not any good ones.
Yeah. I didn't say that.
Very good. If there's no other questions, can we...
Yeah, we got to have some front, right?
Make a motion to move this forward.
I'll second that, all in favor. So we're going to go to page five, Law Enforcement.
So I met with the captain last week, and he's not here. We can go through it line by line, but the only increase, or the major increase, was a cradle point. It's something that the cruisers have in the past. Because we do have poor cell signal in this town, this is something that can track where they are for safety reasons. So if we know like they're on a road, then there's no cell coverage. This cradle point can track where they're at, so that if we, if they call out to them and can't answer, they'll be able to track them. And I'm actually texting the captain now, and he said if there's a specific question...
How much is it?
We can go through, go through it.
I don't see cradle point.
I don't see it.
I don't see cradle point.
I just know it's in here somewhere.
Is that the air card?
It's probably under...
Yes, probably.
It's under equipment, probably. It looks like it's something got cut off.
It's there.
Under equipment.
Is it the air card?
Sounds like air card, yeah, cruiser.
It's down fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we're getting two new cruisers, so...
Okay, I've got one.
Down total.
Yeah, there's one in the back.
And how many deputies do we have?
So we, right now, we have eight deputies, so there's two on almost all the time. I think there's a period overnight that there's one, but it's mostly two. And so the cruisers, we, I got that from them too, and gave you a printout summary. We sent it to Joe of like all the cruisers in their year, so they're on a rotational. They'll be ordered, and I think it's like a year before they even get them.
There's a packet that I had left at the beginning that's in there.
Can I get the equipment so I know where they are?
Yeah, there you go, at any given time.
Yeah.
Any, any questions from the Budget Committee?
I just wanted to keep it...
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
Is it, where is it written about the mileage and the years? I know it's, it's like five, four or five years for the car to get replaced. Where can I find that?
I already gave it to you, Joe's got it.
No, I know which cars are being replaced, I know what their mileage is. I'm saying where is it written?
Their policy?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, thank you. That says when they have to be replaced.
It's a county policy, I want to say it's, what did you tell us, a hundred and twelve?
A hundred and twenty-five, or maybe, yeah.
Yeah, it's county policy?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Okay, any other questions from the Council? Make a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to move this forward.
I'll second.
Okay, move the second in, all in favor. Very good. General Assistance, page one twenty-nine.
This is for General Assistance. The stipend for the employee who processes all the requests. Backup work for that, meets with the people. Training for that employee as well. Applications are valued under state guidelines, that's based off of... Basically, you don't know what each year is going to bring, so I take a look at where we are. Spent in the current year, advertised it over twelve months, to come up with an annual amount. And I also look at past years to see what we've spent. I mean, last couple of years it's been warm, don't have as much. This year it's been a little cooler, so spending a little more. That's the logic behind that. Cellphone allowance for the GA Administrator. She takes calls twenty-four-seven, so...
Who's the General Assistance?
Ruth.
Okay, I got to declare this one too, I guess. Ruth Ann is my daughter, and Phil, I shouldn't be voting on anything that has to do with her pay, I guess. Get forward.
No objection with proceeding today.
Just so you guys are aware too, county is, most towns cannot fund this position, and so county is trying to have one person to oversee different towns. And they, we would have had to pay eighty dollars an hour to be part of that. So us having our own in-house instantly is like amazing.
Saves around thirty to forty dollars a year in wages, plus she's here working full-time. So it's not like someone's coming in for General Assistance. The other person used to just come a couple of days a week, I think, and that was it. After that, you're on your own, you had to find, but she's here, and that's huge. And plus she works a regular job here also, does this.
Clearly had a question.
No, it's just a comment. So Phil, if you don't have any personal gain from anything, you shouldn't have a problem voting.
I know that, but numerous people over the years has accused me of not declaring this. So by declaring this, I don't have to hear it from everybody that dislikes me in this town.
Yeah, there's also Jackie as a backup and I'm a backup, so if there is a conflict of interest, there's others of us that can help administrator, administrate.
It's hard to, it's hard to be read by more people, I think.
Any other questions? And I'll make a motion that we move this forward.
I'll second that, or you can, go ahead.
All in favor? Very good, thank you. We're going to go to Capital Outlay, which is page two oh-seven.
Capital Outlay? Yeah, good. Thank you for giving the page number. Who speaks on this? Scott?
It's going to be, I guess we're not going to debate this one too much. Everything's zero.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Capital Outlay, there's only one item in this that... Ever since you, capital projects that we did earlier, and Capital Outlay is the capital projects that we did earlier, funded through the bond, where this is funded through taxpayer dollars. There's only one item, that's for the major equipment reserve to replenish that. The current balance is forty-five thousand. We've used to date... One second. We've used fifty-seven thousand so far, um, so, this is to replenish that reserve, once it gets, um, the money transferred into the general fund.
How much is in that account, is it right now?
I mean, forty-five.
Forty-five, and we have earmarked that, I think, for this chipper, if we can buy this year's chipper, is that correct? Is that where the chipper is coming out of, is just this account here?
Yep.
So, we would wait the account out?
Correct. Any other questions from the Council? Questions from the Budget Committee?
I moved the passes along.
Second.
Move the second in, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Next one is employee benefits, page two hundred and fifteen.
I didn't have.
Okay, employee benefits, first line, first line is FICA Medicare, that's based off of seven point six five percent, times all the wages in town, that's the formula. Workers' comp, um, look at, uh, the overall trend in past years, it was listed there for you, um, the average amount was about seventy-seven thousand, but, uh, it's been steadily increasing, and last year, or the current calendar, twenty-twenty-five bill is a hundred and sixteen thousand, uh, so I've increased that to a hundred and twenty thousand to cover, uh, any increase that we may see again. We have to, it's by calendar year, so, I know, I know what the amount's gonna be from July to December, but I don't know what, what the amount will be from January to next June, um, so I've estimated a five percent increase, uh, off the prior, off the current, current year amount from January twenty-twenty-five to June twenty-twenty-five, that's where the hundred and twenty thousand comes from. Uh, unemployment compensation, again, I look at prior year, years, just the old trend, that also's been increasing over time, um, again, that's a calendar year amount, so I, I know what the amounts are gonna be from July to December of twenty-twenty-five, I don't know what they'll be from January to June of next year, so, I take, uh, an average based off of twenty-four's amount and twenty-twenty-five's amount, and take half of that, uh, that's where I come up with the twenty thousand three forty-six, which is a decrease from last year's budget amount. The accrued sick vacation time, this is the line that we budget for, uh, employees who leave, um, long-term employees that retire, other employees that, um, decide to move on, uh, we have to pay out their vacation time, um, I know there's a long-term employee preparing to retire in, in the future, very near future, and, uh, so we'll have to, uh, pay that out, what that is.
Big loss.
Yeah, big loss. Group insurance, um, this is our health insurance, we don't know, we actually have, uh, a meeting, a pre-bid meeting, uh, in the next week or two, uh, with our broker, to kinda get a pulse of where the market is this year, uh, then they'll go out and bid on the market, all the different carriers, and return to, uh, give us the results, so we won't know what those will be until the end of April, um, but this is based off of what the current employee, employees are, what, what they take, um, plus, uh, uh, four, four employees that, uh, the chief has talked about earlier, um, and a twelve percent increase estimate, estimated.
Scott, for a point of clarification, was the, the family part increased in here?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, that was, just so you know, we did a comparison, and the town, uh, was only paying fifty percent of the family plans, and most other towns were paying eighty or ninety percents, uh, so we did increase that, because we were like last on the list of contribution towards the family plan.
Retirement, this is, uh, see where we pay for the retirement for the employees, uh, the contributions, uh, to their pla- to either 401 plan or the main PERS pension plan, uh, it accounts for the increase that main PERS tells us what those increases will be for, um, each plan that we have, as well as a seven percent increase, um, for the, for the ICMA, which is the 401A, uh, personnel, uh, decided to increase that one percent this year, and that's based off of all the wages. Disability insurance, uh, this is based off of, uh, uh, based off salary, the employees' salaries, um, times ten dollars per coverage for each employee, at the rate that the, uh, carrier, in, in this case, MetLife dictates, uh, for short-term disability and long-term disability, I've calculated that out, and estimated a one percent increase, that's something that will also go to the market for bid. Last year, we, we used to use Lincoln Financial, we got a better rate going with MetLife, so we changed. Group benefits, this is for the, the, uh, uniforms, for the Public Works employees, and, um, that's just, uh, an amount that, um, Public Works Director, uh, feels should cover all, all the, um, uniforms, boots, et cetera, for, for the, for the guys down at Public Works. Group and dental, and eye care, this is to cover, uh, dental insurance that the town pays part of, uh, for the employees. Along, for three years, we, we didn't have an increase, last year, we actually had a decrease, uh, of three percent, uh, you don't know what, what had happened, so I, I've estimated an increase of three percent for the current year, and that's an increase of twenty-nine-hundred dollars. That's employee benefits.
Question from the Council on this? John?
So, when you come up with all these numbers, and we're, we're talking about adding employees to different spots, do you add those new employees into this?
Uh, no, in the next fiscal year, for, for like, health insurance, once the budget's done, I, I, I don't, obviously, but yes, I do.
I see, okay, yeah, so they're not alre- you're not already kinda anticipating that, we, that'll be next year?
Well, for, um, the chief's proposed, uh, four positions, I have put in the single rate, uh, for those four employees.
Any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Carol?
So, on page two twenty-one, um, the fifty percent of the dependent cost paid by the town, um, you said you guys raised that to eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay. It's probably a typo.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I missed it.
Any other questions from the Budget Committee? Let's make a motion to move this forward, then.
Second that.
All in favor? Perfect. Insurance, page two twenty-seven.
Should I move it forward? I mean, really, come on.
So, this is the property and casualty insurance that we have for all the, um, the building, the vehicles, et cetera, this page is for the liability deductible that we have to pay on any accidents, uh, that we may have to, have the deductible. It's, sometimes we don't use any of it, sometimes we use it a lot, so I, I budgeted the same amount as last year. General liability, this is, um, for everything, for the property and casualty, that's not public official, public officials', uh, liability, so it's, look at, uh, the last five years, get an average of what that change was, and then look at the prior year, um, to take that one-year, uh, increase or decrease, and average that out, that came to ten percent, and, uh, that's the amount, I, I only increased it five point five percent, cause I thought ten percent was too much. And then, public officials' liability, this is for the liability on the municipal officers and all the staff, for, uh, any mistakes we may make, um, it's hard to believe we make them, but we do. Yeah, right. And, uh, it's, it's been under ten thousand forever, except for last year, but the average was eighty-eight hundred dollars, um, I increased it to ten too, just to cover last year's, but, hopefully, it won't be that much this year, but, we'll see. That's insurance.
Any questions about the insurance? Any questions from the Budget Committee?
Make a motion to move forward?
I'll second that, all in favor? Debt services.
I just make an overall comment, that, uh, anytime we, um, like, the impact fees, we have monies that, from prior year bonds that we haven't used, uh, we can't pay back the debt to, to the, uh, bond bank, um, but what we can do is reduce the budget, so, those monies go against this budget to reduce it, so we don't have to raise that in tax dollars. These are all the bonds that we have, um, and their amount, straight-line amount over the life of the bond, uh, I figure out what it'll cost, so, the, uh, amount the same over the ten years, and, uh, in the first year, we don't have to, we only pay interest, and that difference goes into a reserve, called the bond legalization reserve, and is used to cover, uh, any years that we haven't budgeted enough due to the payments. And for the, for this capital cycle, uh, the principal amount was two point eight million dollars, um, and the bond bank estimate is three point two-three, that's a three point six seven on their website, they have a tracking, a tool that you can calculate that out, over a ten-year life, that's about a hundred and eight thousand five hundred, and I've also, we have a couple of bond, prior year bond amounts that we've spent for various items, and they had money remaining, came to ten thousand six twenty-one, which I'm putting back into that account, so we can reduce, it's already calculated in there, but it'll reduce what, what the taxpayers would have to raise for the debt. Tax and bond anticipation notes, this is for, um, I come to the Council in, in the fall and then in the spring for tax anticipation notes, for, uh, being able to keep our cash flow going while, uh, until we get tax money in November and in May, I base that off of one point five million, uh, for three months, twice a year, a five and a half percent rate, starting to see those rates come down, so, uh, at one point, they were under one percent, and I've seen them as high as seven percent, so, but I'm seeing them come down, so that's a good trend. Also, bond anticipation notes, that's, so that we, we receive the money for the bonds in November, um, but a lot of the projects we have, we have to spend the money in July, August, September, uh, that gives us the opportunity to, uh, get temporary financing to, to spend that money before we get the, the actual bond from the bond bank. And, uh, I took one point four million, which is about half of the bond, for this year, five and a half percent over four months, that came to twenty-six thousand, so a total of sixty-six thousand for that. And that's a total debt service.
Any questions, Council? Any questions from the Budget? And I make a motion that we move this forward?
Motion to move forward?
Move in seconded, all in favor? I would go to transfer out, uh, which is page two thirty-nine.
This line item is for any monies that may be transferred out of the general fund into other funds, such as the special revenue fund, or, in this case, uh, for the public safety fair, um, something we have every year, uh, we raised twenty-five hundred dollars for the fair, which then is transferred to that public safety fair fund, to cover the public safety fair.
Any questions about that? Any questions from the Budget Committee? Yes, Heidi?
What is the total in that fund right now?
Give me one second. Give me a couple of seconds. That amount is, actually, it's current, a thousand dollars.
Any other questions from the Budget, or, do they have a question?
I just got one observation, Scott, if I can't fall asleep later tonight, I'm gonna give you a call, because if you go over this, that last half hour with me, I'll sleep like, just like that.
I find this stuff exciting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we all have our takes.
I'm like, he's in.
I'll make a motion that we move this forward?
Second.
Move the second in, all in favor? Okay, that was all the sections we're going over today, uh, I do wanna make a note for everybody here, that the donation part of our meeting will be held Wednesday, the nineteenth, at six P M, so you all know, and we need to vote to move the capital budget to the Budget Committee for their portion.
Order number twenty dash twenty-five, forward the fiscal year twenty-six capital budget to the Budget Committee, whereas at a special joint town council budget committee meeting that was held on March first, twenty twenty-five, a review of the fiscal year twenty-six capital budget and parts of the operating budget was completed by the Town Council and Budget Committee, and whereas the town coun- town council shall forward the fiscal year twenty-six budget to the Budget Committee on March first, pursuant to the provisions of the town charter, now be it ordered that the Budget Committee will have fourteen days to review the fiscal year twenty-six capital budget, and present their recommendations to the Town Council at a special joint meeting on Saturday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Gardner?
Yes.
Harmelo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and I will hear a motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, March eleventh, the council meeting, the public hearing for the, for the budget will, will happen, and then Saturday, March fifteenth, is the next budget meeting, to review capital and go over the operating, pass that forward.
Scott, is there a que- is there a possibility of that getting done on the nineteenth, or the fifth, the Wednesday, or we have to have that Saturday?
To have it on the night, you could have it, could have it on the nineteenth, that pushes the- Have it on the 19th, you could have, could have it on the 19th, but it pushes the, the 14-day out further. Have to recalculate, I could do that, though, and let people know.
I thought in the, last year, we didn't have two Saturdays, or did we, just?
We, we didn't, we, we crushed it all into, into one.
We did crush it into one.
Yeah.
Kinda like the Saturday thing, it's bond and.
It would be a lot quicker next, in the 15th than it was today. This is to give the 14 days by charter for the budget committee.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that, all in favor of adjourned? Done.